But I thought it's okay, like.
Oh, I just mentioned that.
But then.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, no.
Yeah, no, they have.
It's time. You know, did I go?
Yeah, I know, three hours. Good.
Well, I know.
I said.
Yeah, I'll drive right over. It's five hours.
I. You left.
Number as well.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order Connecticut State Board of Education meeting. Please rise to the side of the floor.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands on the nation under our constitutional liberty and justice.
So there it is. We're going to start with public participation. There's three on the, I'm going to call on three names and you can come up as soon as one is done. When you please come up, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address. Patty Fallon. Brandon Fiori, and then Tom Strainfollow. We'll follow.
All the bosses. Sorry.
Patty, can we, hold on. I skipped over something. I'm so used to just going to public participation. You have an oath of office to take first. Not for you, Patty. Here it is. I'm sorry.
Evan Pitcock solemnly swear or firm that I will support execution of the United States, Connecticut, if I continue to be a citizen thereof. I will faithfully discharge according to law as to my abilities these at the office of member of Connecticut Board of Education.
Congratulations, Dr. Pitcock. Can you introduce yourself to the board for us?
I'm Evan Pitcock. I am a retired educator of.
The microphone.
Yeah. I'm Evan Pitcock. I'm a retired educator of 40 years. Started my career in New York City. So I've been urban, suburban, and rural districts. A special education teacher, assistant principal at high school. Principal of Newport High School when I moved to Connecticut in 88. Assistant superintendent in Camden, superintendent in region 10, New Orleans, Brooklyn, and superintendent of town schools. And then the last 11 years of my career, I was the executive director of Cooperative Educational Services. And on top of that, I've had both experiences of being president of a union and I was the president of CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public. Grateful and welcome the opportunity to help serve Connecticut and the children of Connecticut.
Yeah. And when we were off site last month, we swore in Dr. Carlson. So I'd like to have Dr. Carlson introduce himself to the board.
Just so we don't get feedback. Hi, I'm Andy Carlson. I'm a lifelong native of Connecticut. I grew up down on the shoreline and seated to go to, to, well, and then to Connecticut School of Medicine. I'm a pediatrician. I am currently the division head for primary care at Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Also served as a private pediatrician for about 20 years down on the shoreline. So I'm following in the footsteps of Dr. Juan Salazar, who had been my mentor and my predecessor on the board here. Give some insight from a medical standpoint. As well as helps serve the kids in Connecticut. I had the pleasure of being school medical advisor in Milford. I have been involved in schools from outside.
Thank you. Thank you both, Dr. Carlson and Dr. Pitcock. We are so thrilled that you are joining us. Our board is feeling. Now, Patty, you can say.
Good morning, everyone. It's interesting listening to those impressive residents, my partner and I as well. Our longtime homeschool teachers and administrators, we're very happy to be here today. So good morning, everybody. I'm Patricia Phelan, and along with my colleague Brandon Fiori, saying that for me. We are co-presidents of the Connecticut Federation of School Administrators. You have our annual report in front of you today. Our organization wrote the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrative Professional Standards Year in the Board. We are an affiliate of the American Federation of School Administrators, AFL-CIO. We represent 77 public school administrative district leadership teams in the state of Connecticut. We are the only union representing school and district leaders in the state of Connecticut. Everyone of both the rank of teacher and below the rank of assistant superintendent. In that capacity, we support leaders in contract negotiations and we advocate for better public schools and safety of education. The 2024-25 Annual Report by Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrative Professional Standards has been submitted. The Connecticut Federation of School Administrators takes on a leadership role to ensure the management of this council. This annual report is provided to you, the State Board of Education, in support for the legislation that has established a council so that the State Board of Ed may be appraised of its activities and the educational issues that are important to the council members. Last year, the council met three times, with the third meeting being combined meeting between the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrator Professional Standard members and our sister council, the Connecticut Advisory Council on Teacher Professional Standards. Over the past few years, we focused our initiatives through ongoing discussions with our legislative fleet, appointed council members to determine how we can best support educational leaders in the field. Our focus has landed on the need for formalized mentoring programming that will run throughout the field to support first-year administrators as they grow professionally as leaders, focusing on inclusive leadership standards and accountability components. Our goal is to support leaders through kinds of support from more experienced mentors by building confidence and improving leadership skills while promoting a culture of knowledge, transport, and support.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Fiori, and as Patty Phelan indicated previously, we serve as the co-presidents of the Connecticut Federation of School Administrators, better known as CFSA. We are the only administrative union in the state of Connecticut, and we presently represent 1,100 administrators throughout the state. Over two years ago, we at CFSA took on the role of resurrecting the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrative Professional Standards. This is a legislative committee, so our priority was to first get all the appointments filled, which we are very close to accomplishing. As we have met throughout the past two years, it became clear through discussions, anecdotes, and research that the council needed to focus on establishing a statewide mentoring program for first-time administrators. Moving forward, the council will look to establish legislation and will continue to meet with key stakeholders to meet the needs of our new administrators. As we continue to work throughout the state with principals, assistant principals, special education supervisors, and curriculum directors, we see the struggles and isolation some administrators feel in just starting out in a new position. Unfortunately, this is when Patty and I at CFSA got a phone call because something may have gone wrong and they need our support. What we will work together to establish through the Administrators Professional Standards Council is legislation to allow administrators to receive support right when they enter the new administrative position. We have representation on the council from various positions in education. This includes superintendents, administrators, teachers, members of the business community, college professors that work with the administrative prep programs, and parents. All these individuals agree that something needs to be put in place for our new administrators. We will be looking for your support in the future to help to make this happen. Thank you.
Good morning. Tom Prithol, which is from Manchester. Just one of. Up in three items. One is two stages ahead of the Bush and the wellness mentally program to go with it. For administrators, as well as your hiring of more staff, and they get more diverse but qualified. Pushback from Trump as administration, he's made the AI diversity, taking sentences. I want persons to be qualified, but he or she can add to it with new ideas and recommendations. We just learn from each other and make it better. Want to go through history. This is the 80th anniversary, the end of World War II. But in the recent Britain War magazine, two editions ago, they talked about men and women of color that helped out the Allied troops, especially in Eastern theater, far East against Japanese forces. Who were late, late one that was from Bermuda, as other patients in Africa that helped out and they gave their lives too. So with the dislightning war against Nazis and the Japanese imperialism, but on land and sea too. Western isn't really R A M, so give credit where credit is due. Fodder was involved in that conflict as well, I think Fodder. Post Columbus, I would recommend the book that came out in 2009, Fortified the Will by Paulie Lester, that talks about the Italian Renaissance and other scholars and people I know about. So it's a very good book. Came out in 2009. Indigenous Continent came out three years ago by a British historian, Taka Amali. He teaches at Oxford University in Great Britain. But it talks about the presence and the contributions that Americans have given government and treaties and even this polar sovereign nation to, I recommend them. 250 year anniversary of Army, the Marines. 135 years for the Coast Guard this year. The most recent Naval History Magazine talked about the birth of Marines during Revolutionary War. And there were black Americans that fought on both sides of that conflict as well. Dornburg is a movie that's coming out this Friday, dealing with Murray Gery and the other ones that went on trial in 1946 after World War II. So it's highly recommended movie. And in Health, Andrew Blumenfeld is going for AI chat box protection bill in my local newspaper. You say the AI and another art, a researcher, a theor, Guy Tao, professor at technology. Pittsburgh University, but I'll still start old science and sort of media and whole school. Very terrific articles. And with Usports, I always say watching out for AZ, but your book that came out called Usports Mistified by Coach Steve or. Stephen Varelli is very good. It's like an ad in the US Today newspaper. And with current events, you know, coming up, moving a little bit from the youth, you know, that app that came out what, two or three years ago? It'll be good feedback, my students and I would receive in education or any ideas that they would have. And just the Hispanic Heritage Month and Black Butcher, like it's almost programmed, like it's almost does America. PBS and other documentaries that, you know, dealing with culture, everyone could learn from Reagan, right? CNN, the Tony Show, who's a leftist, they're in background and actor on CNN this month. Other things on PBS, PDC News, I want to recommend. And we saw the funding to NPR Radio as well. So I think. It just. Each other as Americans and looking for a better school year and that education is for all of us. And despite the pushback, you guys are doing a good job of the education still alive. Thank you.
That's our public participation for today. I need motion for item four, the consideration of the minutes of our October 8th, 25. It's moved. Second. If it's changed, it's needed. On paper. Bye. For the chair. We started off last month with a very fun celebration at our Teacher of the Year, Connecticut Teacher of the Year. Thank you. I'm Dr. Pitcock. We'd need you that wonderful celebration. A reminder to the board on December 2nd at the Bushnell, we will be honoring all of our districts' teachers of the year as well as Brian Bataj, Bataj, as well as, I know the commissioner probably has been her report, other exciting announcements that occurred last month as well. Thank you to Mr. Harris, Ms. Record, and Ms. Burr, covering our charter hearings. Freebound and. Later this month, so thank you for that. Going to move on to committee reports. Academic and standards will be meeting on November 19th at 9:30. Accountability support will meet on November 12th at 3:30. Finance committee, Mr. Harris.
Morning. Nothing new to report from the finance committee, except that our director's medical leave has been extended and, but. Have a fear because the department is in good hands under the leadership of Pete North. And we have a coming meeting, I believe, the 15th.
18th.
18th of November. And that's. That's it.
Sure. Legislation policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our October meeting, we heard for the proposed adoption of the ETS pair of ways assessments, and we voted to forward that to the whole board for its, for its approval. We also had a presentation on the amendments regarding the Connecticut Educator Preparation and Certification Board. We had questions regarding the presentation and we tabled information until we could come back. And we have a meeting today, 1 o'clock, and they are on our agenda again today.
Connecticut Technical Education and our State Colleges and Universities will report out next month. Guy, who could not be with us today. I'll move on to NASB. Last week, I did attend the NASB Annual Conference in Austin. It was my, one of my terms, Northeast Area Director, so we have a new area director who's from Washington, DC. But it was, it was a wonderful experience and a lot, the two focus things were on AI education as well as math curriculum. It was very nice to, as I was going through different conferences and workshops and so forth, that Connecticut was always asked in the room what we were doing. So we still are leading the way in so many instances. The AI groups were very interesting, as you can imagine. It has a lot of controversy, and I know from some of you who are in accountability and support, we heard, no, from academic standards. We heard from our, our own Irene Parisi updated us and her staff on our AI pilot. They were very much interested in how that was conducted and the interest that goes on beyond that. NASB does have an AI advisory group. So if any board member is interested in purchasing pain with that, with NASB as a Connecticut representative, please let me know and I will put you in contact with the folks at NASB. Interesting group, and they did a lot of, like I said, they did a lot of workshops and brought in a lot. Some were companies that they brought in, but they were, it was interesting to see because of all the controversy you see out there with AI. It was clear with some of the companies why, why there is that controversy. I mean, it was very clear. I mean, they were selling a product, obviously. But it was also very clear of the things that we have to be aware of as we move through that. But certainly, the main focus was that we need to educate our children on how to do it correctly or they will move forward doing it incorrectly because it's not, it's certainly not going to go away. So let me know if you're interested in doing that. I'll move on to SERC, which is our next report. And I ask you to look in your folders on top of the regular program, which is extensive of all the great things we're doing. I did, there were, our last board of directors meeting, there were two, well, there was a presentation, but there were two flyers that were shared with us that I wanted you to see because these are things that are open to you as board members. One of them is coming up, Dream Day, you leave in the way. If you've never experienced any of their activities that involved our students, they're wonderful things that you can participate in. So you have that one that's being placed in November 20th. And then there was a presentation on the following one, the Relative Resortive Practices and Training. And those, that's a two series. It's going to, one is going to be in January and one should be in March. So I just wanted you to have that flyer in your hands so that you're aware of those. And those are also open to board members to participate. And that completely, oh, and just one reminder, our K-Cast Conference is later this month, November 21st. Many of you already responded to all this, but if you are, have not, and you are planning to go, please let her know. Our session for the Meet the State Board of Ed is usually around 5:45, 10:11. So that is a will be, and if you are attending, that we will sit on that panel for that morning. And you're also welcome to stay for lunch when our great staff at the Connecticut State Department of Education is winning the award. So I hope that most of you can attend. To the commissioners' report.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Bennett. And good morning, board members. I'm glad to see you as always. My dear, welcome to Dr. Pitcock. And you've heard his many years of experience in education, which will certainly be an asset alongside our fellow board members. The commissioners' report, again to those of you that's new, is in your supplemental package. And it's a monthly reporting of the agency's efforts and alignment, which is worth five-year comprehensive plan. Every student will be learning life and working on school. And then I highlight selected areas in the report. First, as you now know, that we released the results from the 2024 Next Generation Accountability System. And in a few moments, Indigo Paula Krishna will join us to share more details on that. Additionally, we're still engaged in the work of chronic absenteeism addressing attendance. Our own Corey Sullivan was a panelist in Ed Week webinar recently on the title booth and attendance. What are schools doing to cut chronic absenteeism? Where she represented the world in Connecticut. There was also a national interview article last week with two references to Connecticut. The title was Fewer Students Are Missing School, The State Policies May Have Helped. And they called out with Connecticut and Maryland that invested millions of dollars in wraparound services like mental health, support and at-home visits. And you know about our early engagement and attendance program. And if you recall, we saw our first ever state budget line item was $7 million to support addressing attendance. So we're really pleased that it was a part of that discussion. It also referenced Connecticut publishes attendance data every month and is among the states with the lowest rates of chronic absenteeism that was directly cited in the report. So we still have a lot of work to do. You'll hear that again, but appreciate the hard work that our districts, our educators, and our community partners are doing every, every day to make sure our students are really active and attending school every day. Our literacy officer, Research and Reading Success Director, Melissa, Dr. Hickey participated in the Right to Read panel recently in Harvard, Harvard Library. You'll also hear some positive news in our accountability results around that as well. Additionally, the, our academic office, Irene Parisi, they created a manufacturing month PD playlist where they curated, curated resources for districts that they can use in making sure that our students have access to rewarding careers in manufacturing if they so choose. So that was available to them as well. On Monday, I was at the informational forum on nutrition funding that the legislature had. I was joined by Indigo Paula Krishna and John Frazanelli. As we talked about funding, nutrition funding specifically, at that event, I started off certainly with our good news around what's going on in the state of education, but also shared what I shared with you in our communication on Monday that I sent out. Again, no change for funding from the Department of Education. We continue to access without interruption all the entitlement funds available to us, even during this time of shutdown. Additionally, we have the funding available from the US Department of Agriculture for our nutrition programs. We're currently paying out for the meals that were served in September. We have the resources for the meals that were served in October to reimburse our districts. Those, those claims will be coming into us by mid-November. And also this month that we're in, we have those resources as well to reimburse our districts when the month is over. So that's where we are with funding and we're moving forward. We don't know about November for December, I mean, December, but that's where we are today. I wanted to share that with you. Also wanted to let you know internally, we also try to make sure that we are working together as well. And thankfully, some of our office got together and they hosted our Crctoberfest, sharing our meals and sharing community that did that as well. We also had a chance to celebrate educational excellence for them in this month. As you know, and as Vice Chair Bennett mentioned, we were able to announce the 2026 Connecticut Teacher of the Year. So we traveled to Danbury to do that, Brian Beddish, and that was really awesome. And you can see that we had the governor there. We had Congresswoman Johanna Hayes was there with us, and it was a great time. We were also in that room, kind of as a ruse, was to let students know where they were celebrating their attendance, which was also awesome, the attendance that we have in that space. But it was really, really great opportunity to be there. And then we traveled to Putnam to announce the 2026 Ann Marie Murphy Paraeducator of the Year. Ms. Vanessa Taylor is our Paraeducator of the Year, somebody whose first career was in military service and is now servicing our students with a lot of heart and compassion. So we were really thrilled to do that. And if that wasn't enough celebrating, then we traveled to Bacon Academy in Colchester to announce and celebrate the Milken Educator of the Year Award. That is always awesome. I was sharing earlier that to come to school in the morning and then to leave $25,000 richer that day, yes, certainly not a bad deal. But it is a really total surprise. And all of this happened and the person is not aware until they're literally announced in that assembly. And it is always great to watch the, just, just the response, which is great. So, and then finally, we were able to host the Education Commission of State's first ever New England Regional Convention. We brought together education commissioners, legislators, higher-end and workforce partners, fellow interactive partners. I know Dr. Keller Valers is in the room with us here. And these were folks from Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Vermont, and Connecticut. So we could, we were in this room by the way, learned from each other. They were really impressed with the space, you know. And to learn from each other, share what's working and to build solutions together. So it was great to be able to do that. And the governor was able to join us and provide the marks as well. So that is how we've been working. And it is now my pleasure, I'm going to have Ajita Paula Christian start us off with really good reviews on our accountability results. The press release is in the supplemental packet as.
Good morning. Vice Chair Bennett and all board members, and welcome to the board members and the State Board of Ed. Your service. And thank you, Commissioner, for any time you mention all the. And thank you, Commissioner, for any time you mention all this office for acknowledging the work of the performance office. There is a small team behind me that brings in a wealth of data and generates all these metrics and reports on an annual basis. I really appreciate your support. I shared the video with the team, but then I said, watch the first forty-five seconds. So that, I really appreciate that. Now, for the new board members, just to sort of give you a little bit of an overview, we collect a lot of data from districts to evaluate their performance. And of course, you know, but, and, but we then generate a range of metrics. You know, we collect data on enrollment, attendance, discipline, suspensions, expulsions, things like that. We also collect data on educators. We collect data on the courses that students take, what kind of credits do they earn? And then importantly, we have a lot of assessment information. Not only that, we also get data from external sources. We get data from colleges and National Student Clearinghouse and more recently from the Labor Department. So there's a file data we have about schools and districts and about our students' experiences. Not everything makes it into the full-fledged accountability system. When we're talking here today about accountability results, we're talking about a smaller subset of those indicators. And this accountability system is what's in our federal plan with the U.S. Department of Education, our approved plan. The system has twelve indicators. And we released a few of those indicators in August, our state assessment results and attendance. And we talked about how things were headed in the right direction. And for the first time, really since Smarter Balance was started in fourteen fifteen, how we noticed all student groups showing improvement. We're not getting back to pre-pandemic levels, but we're improving and we're just really encouraging news. What we released last week, yeah, I think I can't remember, but yeah, I think it was last week. Last week was our accountability results, where we released the full twelve indicators and associated pieces with it. And we saw improvements in other indicators, including ninth grade students being on pace to graduate high school. We have a measure on post-secondary readiness, which I'll get into. Four and six-year graduation rates are improving slightly, which is good. Improvements in our physical fitness and thoughts too, because that is something we do track, and participation in the arts. So overall, we're seeing good progress. And the overall score also included on the accountability system, which is called the Accountability Index. We focused at our press event last week, where we had actually three districts and two students, which are fantastic to have. But we focused in on post-secondary readiness and particularly the work we do around dual credit. And dual credit is where students can take college courses when they're in high school and earn both high school credit and college credit. And I truly appreciate Dr. Kelly Valleys joining us for the release as well, because all of this is in connection to where students ultimately are going to end up, which is obviously the workforce. And so we want to make sure all of this work is connected to that. So the metric that we shared that we have in the accountability system is eleventh and twelfth graders achieving, earning three or more credits when they are in high school before they graduate high school. And they have to have it with a C or better. And when we started in twenty-one, twenty-two, really reporting this measure and including it in the accountability system, we had about twenty-two point three percent of our eleventh graders, around seventeen thousand five hundred students in those two grades. And in three years, we have increased that to thirty point seven percent. And I expect even more in the years ahead. I would say this is a direct relation to the investments that we have made at the state level and really kudos to the administration, but also the legislature, because we've made investments with our high schools and also with our higher ed partners. So we use our SIR money, which is the education portion of the ARPA funds. But we also use the core ARPA funds, which when it's the legislature actually allocated around seven million for this work. So two million of the ARPA funds went to districts and about five million went to our higher ed partners. Four years, two years, public, private, you know, anybody who wanted to play got a share of those funds. And as a result of it, there have been accelerated work in building partnerships between high schools and colleges and earning students earning this credit. So you could see the percentage changes even for our student groups that historically have not done as well in the system. So you could see, for example, Black and African-American students. Three years ago, it was fourteen and a half percent, now it's twenty-three point four percent. Still a ways to go, but significant improvement in a short timeframe, really dramatic improvement. Hispanic students going from fourteen to twenty-two point two. Students from low-income families going from fourteen point nine to twenty-two point three. These are huge increases in our system and represent thousands of students, you know. So I mean, it's, it's, it's not a, it's a Herculean effort on the higher ed side and on the school side. The media provided really some positive coverage of the event. We were pleased to see that in The Mirror, in WTNH, CT Insider, et cetera, sort of highlighting this work. I mean, there's still a lot of challenges and Keith Norton's office under Dr. Hughes's leadership is now leading this work, which is really awesome. And now there is dedicated state appropriation for this as well. So thanks to the championing of, and I believe that might have been an expansion proposal from this board as well, it was part of the budget expansion proposals. So really pleased to see that as well. And before some of the comments, and it really drives home the point here, you know. Caleb Markowitz, who was a senior at Jonathan Law in Milford, basically saying that this has really made me more confident, you know, just that I can do college-level work, and that's important. And she's pursuing a four-year degree. And if you go to the bottom right corner, was the other student who says, I want to go into healthcare in Allied Health One, which is one of the courses, was a highlight of all my dual enrollment courses. And it really helped me figure out what field I want to go into within Allied Health. She was initially considering physical therapy, but then sort of through this work, realized that she really wanted to go into, to be a radiology technician. And so she went on job shadows and real-world experience, Grace Johnson from Rockwell High School. So she kind of figured out her path and now has that credits under her belt to really pursue this certificate. And we had three superintendents, two assistants, one assistant and two supers. So Joe McCary from Vernon, Ian Agutaya from Milford, and also Lisa Villas from East Haven was also present. So really good comments from them. And Superintendent McCary in particular also was talking about how we need to really change the message about four-year degrees for everyone. And we really need to provide students and Superintendent Agutaya said like, we need to provide them with options. You know, students should be able to choose, and we need to really make sure all those options are to a pass. So it was, it was an excellent conversation and really good, good media coverage. We were releasing accountability results. I know we were focused on one indicator, but we sort of do the whole picture. And part of that is using the complete results to identify schools of distinction. And either schools where good things are happening. And so we had, we identified a hundred and forty schools of distinction, thirty-four of them in our alliance districts. And that's been a staple every year. Some of our Blue Ribbon Schools come from this school of distinction list. So when we did the Blue Ribbon Celebration in October, that alliance school was a school of distinction for multiple reasons. We also have to identify schools that need state support. You know, who are some of our lowest performing schools, you know, consistently? Where might be some targeted issues? So we identified seventy-two schools. Some of them are repeats, some of them are new. Forty-six, what we call turnaround schools, needing comprehensive support, and twenty-six focus schools. Just for context, we have a little over a thousand schools in our state. And so seventy-two of them are being identified for support. So just so you, you know, kind of like where, what the landscape is. And ten schools that were previously identified have exited those support statuses and don't need state support. So they're making improvement and we feel confident to let them go. So I think that concludes my updates. And Commissioner, I'll turn it back to you or any questions.
If there are questions on accountability.
I'll make one comment, because I think when you're talking about the dual credit, I think what's really made a difference in some of the quotes that you put up there is that we now have, I think, districts, administrators, teachers recognizing that this opportunity is not just for our honor students. It is, you open it up to those who truly want to go and experience that path. And I think that, and I think that's just great. Because it's, every student should be given that potential to shine in the area that they shine in. So I thought that was great that you included it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I wanted to share that, and so you have it, and appreciate you have some, I've seen press reports where certain districts are also doing their own press information releases on what they're doing texturally in their local districts. But it is good news in the time with challenges that's there. And I'm just, my profound appreciation certainly to our school districts, our educators, our paraeducators, everyone in that space that is a part of seeing these positive outcomes. And I, you know, take the time if you can to appreciate that. We share that with legislators as well, asking them to do that. While I know we quickly talked about the things that may go in the wrong direction, we should equally be talking about the things going in the right direction. And I'm just so thrilled that that's happened. And I appreciate, I send out a thank you to superintendents for all the work of them and their staff, but also internally, because I thank the staff here that is providing that level of support as well. So all around, lots more to do. However, this is momentum for going forward. Because going back, you know, going back to what Ashe talked about in the investments and what I said to legislators on Monday, that we incentivize success. These were not mandates. These were things that we thought was important. We started that investment with our own SIR dollars that were dedicated to us, that we determined that that was something we wanted, we needed to invest in. And then the legislators did with the ARPA funds, and now we have it in the state budget. And so that is, in my mind, you're incentivizing the things that you want to see happen. And that's probably a model as we go forward. So I certainly appreciate that. So thank you for that. Next update for you is Hartford Public Schools Fiscal Operations. So I'm asking Keith Norton, you'll join us, Chief Strategic Planet Officer, who's been overseeing and that work. Okay, Brian may be joining you with him for this one? And you have a summary also in your packets, in the supplemental packet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. It's great to see you all again. For the newer board members, a very, very good summary. In response to rather alarming reports coming out of Hartford Public Schools with regard to very big budget deficits and the impact on both special education services and employment in general, there were talks of looming layoffs. On June fifth of last year, this board authorized the department to look into some of the problems at HPS and authorized the commissioner to take necessary steps to help ensure the fiscal stability of Hartford Public Schools. In response, the agency took a three-pronged approach. In the beginning, we looked at magnet fund utilization. We looked at generally the financial operations of HPS and also the delivery of special education services to our students. The board has already received the fourth grant in its eighteen K twelve with regard to special education, along with some recommendations, as well as Public Works LLC, the consultant that looked at the financial operations of HPS. Later this morning, we'll be reviewing the executive summary of the magnet fund utilization report. In the meantime, this past July, the agency put together an interdisciplinary team representing almost every office, which is in part, to go ahead and take these recommendations from Public Works LLC in kind of solutions K twelve. And we'll be working with HPS, a team from HPS, to implement these recommendations. We also, we have met with them twice already. We also have been working with them to identify other areas of support based on these recommendations, but also to give them technical support and assistance in implementation. Two reports from a non-monthly basis will be about the progress that we're making in this area and also reporting back any problems or pitfalls that we find along the way. In the meantime, I have with me, I'm frequenting our directors that legislation, who will talk to you a little bit about some of the work that the Bureau of Special Education has been doing through the summer and beginning of the fall.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to see you all. As Keith mentioned, our office has been hit by our supports and monitoring and accountability with Hartford Public Schools. This past summer, we worked with the district to create a tool, if you will, to track and monitor each individual's services within their IEP document that are impacted by staffing vacancies or the district's inability to implement those services. So we've had several meetings with the director and her team and meet on a monthly basis to review that information. And we've been meeting bi-weekly to look at the strategies around staffing vacancies and what methods they're using to trust those services that are being disrupted by vacancies. The tool's working very well. We're actually replicating that tool or work with other districts in our other monitoring activities. We've also conducted onsite visits with their extended school year program. So for those of you that don't know, some students that have IEPs require extended school year services that can be provided over the summer months or in extended times during the school year. We did sixteen observations of learning spaces to look at the adequacy of staffing as well as the public services. Actually, the staffing was very sufficient in those summer programs that we observed, and there was high-quality disruption happening. We were very impressed with the staffing levels and the strategies, which included trauma-informed practices, social-emotional learning, and parent educators who were implementing high-quality services at that time. One of the things we connected with the district, which we found was a missed opportunity, was for those makeup services or compensatory education to take advantage of that time over the summer months. And so we're working with them on coordinating their administrative structures and systems to be able to monopolize the time that they have. So they have those recommendations in place moving forward. We've also conducted compliance reviews for their IEPs and prior written notice. And Hartford Public Schools has reduced their number of non-compliance with IEPs from two hundred and fifty-five non-compliant issues in June of twenty twenty-five to a hundred and twenty-nine, where we're at currently. So we're still working with them to improve that. The also, as just recently released, district's annual performance report, terminations. Hartford Public Schools was designated as needs intervention one. What that means is that the state will be involved and around their fiscal application for the IDA plan to ensure that those dollars are aligned with the areas that are impacting their determinations. And finally, we are conducting interviews with families over the summer. Unfortunately, the volume of parents we were able to contact over the summer was not great. So we ramped that up in the fall and are getting more and more parents. We partner with the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center to do those interviews and collect that information. We're asking parents, is the district communicating with them about the service delivery and any impact there are in those circumstances? And we're reviewing their communications with the administration. So letters sent out, phone calls to make sure parents aren't informed, not only the service implementation, but also the plans to make up those services. And we continue on doing technical assistance and support in collaboration with other departments. So throughout the year, we'll also be providing additional updates. Happy to answer any questions. Turn it back a little bit to me, Commissioner.
I had a quick question about, if we want to ask you about, I noticed we have item eleven, which is about fiscal operation specifically. If we have questions about that, should we table it?
All right, so specific to the magnet school report?
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, there will be that, sorry if I missed that.
Related to the number of non-compliant IEP prior written notice events.
Yeah.
I agree, a hundred and twenty-nine, and I find that alarming still. A school teacher, but could you give us some examples? A school teacher, but could you give us some examples of what it means to be non-compliant under that category? Like, what would that look?
Sure. It's a great question. So what we're looking at, these are um reports that we pull, can pull on a daily basis in our Connecticut CT-Sense data system. And what it does is track annual reviews to ensure that they're occurring on time. So an annual review is due today and it happens tomorrow. That's an issue of non-compliance. So uh on any given day, uh we're, we're working with the district to ensure that those meetings are scheduled and held on time. The second piece of that report looks at three-year reevaluations. So similarly, when that date is due, if it's past due, uh then we're ordering those PBTs to happen. Uh and the designation for continued eligibility, we're exiting to happen. For prior written notice, it's a little more technical. Um anytime an IEP is changed or there's a plan for an evaluation or a change in placement, parents receive what's called a prior written notice document. So if components of those documents are not complete, they're not compliant. And so we're working with them, training uh their administrators and staff district-wide to ensure that there are, you know, reduce the number of non-compliance with prior written notice. So it's essentially letting families know what the actions are and changes in the IEP once they occur.
So when you're referring to that there are events of one hundred and twenty-nine, um is it correct to assume we're saying that's one hundred and twenty-nine students being impacted?
It could be one student with multiple issues. So I can break that down for you and, and uh send that to you. And is that any given point in time? And so um, yeah, so one student could have a late annual review and
The prior.
issue with a prior red notice.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well.
I, I have a question based on, I'm sorry, on the compliance we have. And in our, and in terms, in terms of when students are going to be identified. You know how we have a window for them to be tested and?
Yes.
Is that part also?
It is.
Sometimes, okay. And there's data on that, that they do need the ten days and they continue.
Yes. So for initial evaluation, schools have to conduct those in forty-five school days. So that's part of why Hartford is in these intervention one with their designation for initial evaluation timeline issues. So that if they go over forty-five days, it's a citation from us. So the target, the compliance issue, so it's set at a hundred percent. If districts are making progress and have ninety-five percent or more, that means there'll be substantial progress toward that goal. If they're under that percentage, then we're working with them to address the systems that have been played to ensure those.
Thank you. Okay.
Long.
And also, do you also include as part of it translations for parents that can't understand the language, although it's a part of that too?
Yeah. So one of the wonderful features of CT Sense is that it translates any document in the system into the top ten languages in the state. So parents are able to receive IEPs, prior written notice, uh their parent tried to special education, translate it in their native language. If a family speaks other than the top ten languages, there's a process for that, just as a special request, and you could take additional time. In those top ten languages in the state, parents are receiving translated documents, can be able to sign.
And also, on IEP, they have a translator.
So that's a separate issue. So in a PPT meeting, to have a live translator, I know that's uh important to families. And so I'll see you work closely with folks, um Dr. Mirabelle and Megan Aluiky, to ensure that districts have access to translators in the state and um translation lines, be able to uh address those issues. We know that's uh an area of need because um not only is that person have to have dual language, but they have to understand the special education language and lingo. So uh we've been working to support that process also. You. Long.
Any other questions?
And uh thank you to the team for this and, and for the board to understand that what was done here. We didn't just issue a report and walk away that we're in it. Uh the team is engaging and really addressing the issues as they occur. And as other things come to our attention for the district is now positive into this team uh to follow up uh and to, to take action. So we'll keep you posted as we've been doing on a monthly basis. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. We'll hear from uh Dr. Hughes about Newport Public Schools and the actions on that as well. And I think John Presidentelli is gonna join. And you also have a summary in your supplemental packet.
Who I was here. I'm the state board. Thank you, Commissioner. So pleased to uh be with my colleague here, John Presidentelli, to report on the starting report for public schools. Um I'm gonna try to match some of the uh older information for some of our newer board members, as well as um the progress I've made as we are exploring with the district. So um back in July, uh we received the final um, the audit for the of the great public schools fiscal structures and processes. And that audit produced thirty-four recommendations for the district. Documentations specific to not only the governance order of part of the fiscal structures, but then also internal control um systems that are built within the district. Currently, within the district, we have a technical assistance team that is assisting the district with day-to-day operations to large, larger systemic challenges that the, the district is navigating. And as that technical assistance team really helps the district lift their budget processes and support them with the fiscal years planning, there is also a significant need to address the day-to-day fiscal operations that were found in the, uh the forensic audit, those thirty-four recommendations. So under the Commissioner's leadership and guidance, uh we establish uh a, a supportive structure for developing out all of those internal controls within the district um and fiscal processes. And we were able to um through a, a process of procurement, identifying um individuals that you should be very familiar with, Public Works, to come in and to support the district, address those thirty-four recommendations listed in front of the audit. So what you have in front of you is their scope of work. Through that process, we worked uh through the vendors on the map, their contract, uh the Department of Administrative Services, uh put out a call for, for quotes and published works with the identified group, who were able to match the needs of the district um with their skill and expertise. We also are very familiar with their work and that this board may well be uh in, in Hartford. So just recently, um the Public Works team has met with the existing technical assistance team that I, that I had mentioned before to coordinate roles, responsibilities, and the work to implement this statement of work or scope of work that you see in front of you to address those thirty-four recommendations. So that is probably the, the biggest um change since we were last here as an outcome of the forensic audit. I'm gonna take a moment to hand off to my colleague, uh John here, uh relative to some updates regarding child experience as we are still looking at the full landscape in this district, uh even though we're bringing to you some of the bite-sized chunks of the, the bigger moves that are happening part of the thing. So, uh do you want to speak to?
Thank you, Charlie. Um I'm John Presidentelli. I'm the Director of the Division of School Health, Child Nutrition and Family Services here at the Department. Um so the Department of Education is required under the U.S. Department of Agriculture to go into districts every three years and review their child nutrition programs. Uh we conducted a review in twenty twenty-four and uh we had some findings in, in Bridgeport. We had some findings in Bridgeport. So the team has been working with Bridgeport to um put in those two, put current actions in place. So just to give you some scope, you can see from the report that we had to recover a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from their program. Uh please note that the USDA requires us to recover those funds. We don't have any wiggle room. There are some ways in which we can reduce the amount that we take back, which is what the team did. Um it's important to note for scale that Bridgeport, between the national school lunch program, school breakfast program, uh commodity foods program, and the fresh fruit vegetable program is reimbursed at a cost at an amount of about twenty million dollars annually. So this was a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars recovered from monies that we had already paid them. So the specific issue here was they had an inter-agency or interschool agreement um with a private school. And they were uh counting meals at the cafeteria level instead, instead of counting meals at the classroom level. So the meals were going into the classroom, the USDA requires that that meals get counted there when they're actually picked up by a student and they have all the components and the teacher needs to count them. That wasn't happening. Um so the corrective action was to put practices in place to um accurately count those. Once they did that, we took a representative month and then looked back and we have to look back at the entire year which are happening. And so we've recovered that hundred and twenty-one thousand. It sounds important, but it's, it's a USDA regulating very specific about counting.
And I wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure that that was transparently in the room, uh as I know folks watch. Because the, the headline may be, you know, stay taking money back from Bridgeport uh while they're having, you know, uh financial challenges. So I just wanted to make sure there was transparency about what happened here, what we're required to do under this nutrition program.
And I'm guessing that the counting procedures, they want to make sure that the actual student is counted for, not the amount of meals that go into the school that might not
Exactly.
be used or utilized in some way. Okay.
In this case, forty-four meals were going from the cafeteria. They were counting them forty-four, but there weren't forty-four students.
Students getting it. That's what I thought.
All right. Well, that is Bridgeport. Uh and we will certainly again uh continue to update you monthly. That's really important. And the final uh report uh is a sheet, and then a sheet come again. I know we were asking for about the attrition of teachers, even uh as you heard who say that either that's worse or us, uh we people say lots of uh that's worse. Uh thanks again to the performance office. We mean for that, we have very data and available. I wanted to share this one with you.
Please, thank you. Um so this was actually a legislative requirement for us to create this educator and nutrition dashboard. And um so what we included on the slide is really a screenshot of the dashboard. We didn't want to do a live demo necessarily, but that is, uh the, the dashboard is on end site. And yes, we are dashboards or us. It, it it's getting hard actually to keep up with all the stuff that we have out there. Um so what is attrition? Attrition is essentially um of the folks who are certified educators who are in a given year. How many of them are still there that year and whoever not, you know, that's what we're defining initially. Uh so looking at all the educators in here, how many are present in next year? But how they manifest themselves in the next year varies. There could be classroom teachers who stay classroom teachers. There could be classroom teachers who are still in a certified position but are not a classroom teacher. Um there could be a, an educator, certified educator who remains a certified educator. There could be a uh a person, uh you know, a, a teacher, but then they are no longer in Connecticut. So we had to sort of tease out all those different combinations. And essentially what the dashboard has in the top, you can see there are four tabs. Uh there's a classroom teacher's dashboard, which is what we put a screenshot of. Um and then there is a data tab which shows the sort of underlying data. The third tab is all certified educators. So there, we're not looking necessarily at classroom teachers. We're looking at all certified educators. Classroom teachers are a big part of it. But it also includes other certified educators. The, the, the combinations will change based on what role they were in in a given year. And essentially what you see is that, again, this isn't the classroom feature view. Um, you know, in the most recent year, twenty-three, twenty-four, and we're looking at October one data. So we look at October one from one year to October one of the next year, because it gets complicated trying to do other things. So kind of a snapshot perspective, you see that ninety-two point four percent of those who were in twenty-three, twenty-four stayed in classroom during, in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um and of those who didn't, a, a small percentage, about one percent um stayed in Connecticut Public Schools but left the classroom. And then about six point eight percent left Connecticut Public Schools. And if you look at that, and obviously we're, there's a lot of focus on who left Connecticut Public Schools. And if you look at that, the trend line there for the past uh five cycles, you'll see that it goes from about six point seven, six point six, whatever, prior to the pandemic. Then it increases to uh seven point five in that one year. And then it's come back down kind of the pre-pandemic levels. So just to give you some numbers, this is about forty-two to forty-three thousand people. That's the universe in the teacher pool, individual people. And when we say six point eight percent, we're talking about twenty-eight hundred people, twenty-eight hundred, twenty-nine hundred people. And when they leave Connecticut Public Schools, it doesn't mean they're just, they can be retiring. I mean, it's, it's like, you know, they're no longer present in the next year. There is a district type tab in that report, and essentially that lets you look at different types of school districts. So you can look at local public school districts, regional public school districts, uh charter schools, rest school districts, endowed academies, et cetera. And the, the main outlier data point in that is our public charter schools, because they do use um uh organizations that staff them on a more temporary basis, like for a two-year period. So for their, uh for the uh public charter schools, for example, if I were to look at how many left Connecticut Public Schools, you know, compared to the six point eight percent statewide average, their percentage would be a nineteen to twenty percent for a given year that left Connecticut Public Schools. So they're kind of your outlier in the data. Every sort of district type, kind of the percentages are roughly similar. Um and in the charters, so I mentioned about twenty-eight hundred folks leaving Connecticut Public Schools and the chart, and of those, uh the charter schools roughly is like seven hundred or so of those twenty-eight hundred individuals are from the charter schools. So again, you know, we had to satisfy a requirement. I know there was, there was a lot of talk about people leaving Connecticut Public Schools during the pandemic. And yes, there is a slight uptick uh going from six point eight-ish percent to about seven point um five percent. That amounts to going from twenty-eight hundred to about uh thirty-two, thirty-three hundred. So it's kind of, that's kind of the the jump, if you will. About four hundred, four hundred and fifty people in that one year sort of doing that. But then it's reverted back to kind of pre-pandemic uh levels. So um again, so this was a, it seems simple. Hey, give me the attrition data, but there's a lot to it. Never simple and defining who are the classroom teachers. I got to go over all the assignments and then sort of identify that group. Uh but then sort of tease out all these different combinations. The report also allows you to go select for individual school districts. You can actually pick a district and get the report. But there's a lot behind just a simple uh thing. And it's now built. What that means is that every, every year when we load the staff data, all of our at-site processes will populate a whole bunch of all-related reports. So this report will get populated when we load the staffing data in uh early February. The ones that's finalized, we load it, and then this dashboard will also be populated.
Someone?
Uh Keith, thank you so much for this uh report. I think it's fascinating, given it was a legislative requirement. In the spirit of uh making your job harder, in the spirit of sort of taking into many complications you alluded to under these data. From the perspective of an individual district, um what may matter, which is not just whether the student or teachers are, leaves the, the state of Connecticut, but whether they, they leave the district, right? Potentially to move to another district within Connecticut. I'm curious if that kind of transition, uh which you might also, you know, for which the rates might be quite higher and which might also vary across districts and places that are very relevant for those districts' experiences, if saying teachers are moving from lower and to higher districts over their careers. Is something that you're seeing here already or that you're thinking about adding?
We've looked at those types of flows in the past. So the, the idea of like which district they go. So for now, you could easily pull up a, a single district and look like Hartford or Bridgeport or whatever. And you can look to see what percentage of students, uh I mean, sorry, educators left that district but stayed in Connecticut Public Schools.
That's in here.
That is in there. Yeah. So if you actually pick, I'm sorry, I almost wish now that we had done live.
It's just not to know that it's there.
It is there. Uh so you can actually pick a, a single district. Um and uh you will be able to see those uh those grades, where it'll say, you know, X percentage left the district but stayed in Connecticut Public Schools. So you'll be able to, you'll be able to sort of poke around individual districts and see that. Actually, thank you for that. So you'll be able to, you'll be able to sort of poke around individual districts and see that. Actually, thank you for that.
Lots.
Um, I want to make your job easier for you.
So, so far, run down.
But you gave me quantitative data. I'm looking, I'm just thinking, will you be looking at qualitative data like exit interviews? Why do teachers or any sort of idea I believe a district, would that be something to consider?
That actually is part of that legislative requirement. The, the thing is that the mandate is on the local district and the reasons why folks leave is, is fuzzy. But the data are, there is a coding scheme where the data comes to the department. So that is something that we have to report and is in progress, will get reported in the next year. If, I don't know how revealing it will be. Because I don't know, again, it's like, it's what the educator says to you is all you have. So I'm not sure it's gonna be as revealing as folks think it might be and, but we'll report what we have. We'll make that data transparent.
Um, I have two questions for you. So I know that a lot of teachers leave at like the five-year mark. And I was wondering how does Connecticut compare in regards to those other states of like after teachers leave after five years? And do you have any data on younger teachers and how often they leave the profession? Because as we all know, like teaching is one of those fields that are having harder time for younger people to get into. So I just wondered if you have any data for those two questions.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think it's an excellent question that. You know, it almost makes me wonder if we should add a feature here that looks at years in the profession or age or some kind of way to sort of say, you know, folks leaving the profession, you know, at a younger age. There are some custom analysis we're doing, which we will come out with some information on the idea of last in, first out. Which is, I know something that has, that is of interest, especially when folks, you know, in a district has to let go of some folks who are the ones they let go. Especially in the context of, you know, having a diverse educator workforce. So that is something that we're looking at. It's not part of this report, but that is something we're looking at. Short answer is I don't have the numbers that you're asking for off the top of my head. But I think those are, I think that's an excellent question.
Yeah, go.
A quick question about what you just said, twenty eight hundred leave Connecticut.
Yes.
Seven hundred from charter schools.
Seven hundred of the twenty eight hundred are, again, um, these are rough numbers. They'll change a little bit every year, but.
Well, I guess my point is that that's one-fourth of.
Yeah.
Are from charter schools. Charter schools don't make up one.
Right. That's why I highlight it is proportional. So when you look at the charter school rate, it's like twenty percent, whereas here it's like six point eight, seven percent. So.
But you, you had mentioned some of the reasons. I'm just concerned that seems like it's just the high.
Well, they have folks from places like Teach for America who are there on a short-term, two-year placement. So they come, they teach in a certified position and then after two years, they may move on to other things and not be in the Connecticut teacher workforce.
I just think that is a systemic problem.
Just, I, I don't, that's not a new thing, right? That's been there before.
I think it's very often we go through this in accountability and support when we go through charter schools and their, but their teacher. Certification rates and we see them going up and down and I think a lot is because of this. Either they, they go in, they have certain certifications, they become certified, they go into the regular system versus the charter. Or leave, Ajit said, they, they are from different agencies that come in and then leave. But we see that often in accountability and support. When they come to us maybe a year or two years later, it's, it could change from like ninety six percent in them, they dip down to eighty percent. And you know, that concerns us because they're below what they're supposed to be. So we see that go up and down in accountability. So I'm looking at my colleagues that are on accountability with me often. And that has been something that's particular to charter. We don't see that regularly in a system. Mr. Reverend?
That stole my original question, so I felt like I had to come up with another question. And so we're looking at the left Connecticut public schools. Did I hear you correctly that co-mingled in that attrition data are educators who retired?
Yes.
So.
They, they're, they're.
So that's, that's not actually like leaving the profession, like you retired. So that's.
Right. They are leaving Connecticut, but they're not in Connecticut public schools. So it's from an attrition standpoint, we're basically saying who was there in one year and who's not there.
Do we have a way to tease out of retirement attrition?
Yeah, we have and that, that's gonna come, but that's gonna come to Dr. Lillis's question about the reasons for leaving. So when we add that in, that will give you that breakout of what's happening in terms of like, why are people leaving? Uh, so that will include that.
Right. But retirement's not exit interview kind of thing, but retirement would be related to collecting from TRB. As opposed to, I'm like, as a classroom teacher, I am now done with the teaching profession. And now I want to go work in a research lab utilizing my physics degree for something else. It might like, those are two very different things. And I think to your point, my own experience in my own school district is that exit interviews are not high quality. They do not capture accurate, real data because they are not high quality. And most of the time, the Google form that gets sent out, no one's actually conducting an interview to have a conversation. And so I agree that the data that may come out is not going to be of high quality. Because when people are leaving for less positive reasons, they're not going to fill out a Google form. But exit interviews were more of more high quality. I think we would get better information about the question.
So can we tease out the retirees in this data? Yes, absolutely. So, and I think, and I don't mean to sound fluke, but I think that is exactly how we will answer that question too. So I think it'll be a supplement to this dashboard so that we can then tell the story of like, of the blah, 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 leaving, so on. So yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll sort of round that story out in the months ahead.
I think all these points are such good points that we're making through this. And now we've got to find some way to put it together when we get the, such the negative press about teachers leaving the profession. Because we're not going to get teachers, people to go in, our young people to go into teaching if they constantly reporting how everyone's leaving. And we really can show that that really is not the case here in Connecticut.
We have a ninety three percent retention rate. Like, that's a better headline.
Yeah. And, and I think that, and so that's why I really appreciate this report because I think it's important that we see, as, as well as all the program and rising, you know, those types of things that. That we can really talk with those young students that this, this is a profession, we want you to go into, it is still the greatest profession. But there are a lot of different reasons why someone leave teaching. But it's, I know, I know we've had this conversation with the governor. When schools are opening, he gets very nervous when all of a sudden, you know, we're down a hundred and thirty staff. I, we exited. Well, it could have been, I know with the year that I actually retired from the classroom, it was, it was a huge hiring year thirty six years before that. So as you're approaching, you're, you know, it's still thirty seven and a half years. As you approach that, of course, you're going to get more people that are retiring. But it shouldn't reflect, you shouldn't be going into like, oh my God, you know, sixty teachers are leaving Bridgeport. They might be retiring from Bridgeport. It shouldn't reflect poorly on a district because someone retired for that. So I, I wish we could find some way to mesh them together, you know, and.
I think that is.
A better story.
And again, I do think that when we start to bring in that reasons for leaving, I think that will tell the more complete story. And I do think that what Dr. Zimmerman was talking about previously, those patterns do exist. Uh, we've, we've seen that in the past and I think if you poke into individual districts, you will see the difference in the rates between leaving the district but staying in Connecticut public school. When you go onto Bridgeport and versus Fairfield, you'll see different rates. So I think that phenomenon is real and that happens. So I think that is there and that's part of the system that, you know, we have and we've got to figure, like, we got to talk about that and think about.
Yeah. And those districts have to concentrate on, why is it happening to, why is this happening and, and work on that for their district.
Right. And, and it depends on the local context, the surrounding districts, the, the commute times. I mean, all of those factors come into play because as a, as a teacher, teaching in a, in a high-needs district, you know. Those, those things need to be sort of looked into and supported to, to counter those things. So I think everything we're saying is true here. So I think we just need to continue to refine this to maybe tell that finer story. So I think super helpful feedback and questions, thank you.
Great report. Thank you so much.
I'll mention it to the, I mean, the, again, there's like, I agree that works. The design of the report is one thing, but getting the data to be accurate is like, it took months. I'm not kidding. It was not easy to sort of tease through those three lines for, for individuals. Because every time you did something, it would be an exception that didn't fit that rule. And we have to figure out what's going on there, but.
It's incredible work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And having the information to everybody's point allows us to have data in for conversation. Uh, because if not, it's just folks throwing information out and sometimes it can be alarming. So it is about having factual information that we can talk about. Because it is worth having those conversations instead of in exit interviews, we should probably do, you know, stay interviews. Where you find out why people, what do you do to make sure people are staying? Those are conversations to have as well. So Ajit, thank you as always. And that is my reading on the report.
Well, thank you. It was all so informative and so important. Um, I need a motion on item eight, A, the report on agricultural science and technology education for five years after graduation.
With the move.
Thanks. I'm reading it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Vam, and board members, and twelve and Dr. Swinkoff. I've been a long time saying of your work from afar and it's been a good one. So with me this morning is my colleague Carol Macken, Education Consultant for, or in the academic office for career impact of education. Mr. Macken specifically provides oversight, monitoring and support for the twenty one agricultural science and technology center. And we have a special guest, Morgan Maglio, an agriculture teacher at Southern City High School. Before you is the annual report on the agricultural science and technology education graduates for the graduating class of twenty nineteen. The last five-year report became key before we went June eleventh, twenty twenty five, for the graduating class of twenty eighteen. The purpose of the annual report is to provide you the date board of education with the results of an annual study of the educational and vocational activities graduates have been engaged in five years after graduation. And while this is a retrospective, it is important to share that in the here and now, how amazing these programs are and just as amazing are the students doing the learning in these centers. The lifelong skills developed will truly ensure that they are choice-ready beyond faceable. The executive summary outlines the findings of the study for your review with conclusions provided on page two of the report. And I would like to bring your attention to the table on page five and six of the actual study, which highlights the employers and the job titles of those that kind of responded to the survey. You'll notice that many agricultural-related positions are held by our graduates. And if not directly linked to agriculture, we learn that students utilize those skills to go up in these ag centers to engage in other work that they also have a passion for. At this time, I, I invite Mr. Macken to introduce our special guest, Morgan, to hear of her experience and learning into Connecticut agricultural sectors.
Thank you. Morgan here comes from us in teaching through a different system than what we do. She is a graduate of Southern City High School Agricultural Science and Technology Education. And I always want to point out that even though a lot of the students don't go on agriculture, they all give high credit to what they learned in the programs or where they're investing right now. And Morgan is one of those that came out of high school, not going to be a teacher. She is now one of our best teachers that we have in this state.
Um, I am Morgan Mack. I'm honored to be here and I'm a little nervous too. Um, I originally graduated from Southern City High School back in twenty eighteen. Exactly last, the last session you had was the last year's report. I went to Southern City High School as an agriculture student. When I went into college, when the whole world opens up to you, it's kind of hard to pick what you're going to do for the rest of your lives. So with all these options available to me, I wasn't sure exactly what I was going to do. I, I kind of bounced around. I knew I wanted to work with people, students of some sort. It was actually my senior year of college and I realized I wanted to be a teacher. And I wasn't sure exactly how I was going to go about it, but I didn't want to go back to school until I had some sort of experience. So I went to special ed. It was then that my previous teacher reached out to me and he asked me what I was doing for the five-year review because he was gathering data for that and he said, what are you doing? And I had told him that I was currently looking to become a teacher, but I just wanted some experience first. And he opened up to me that they had a long-term sub-position available. I had no idea that I had agriculture, that being an agriculture teacher was available to me. I didn't even think about it at the time, but when I jumped on that, I jumped on it as quickly as I could. I went long-term subbed. I made sure I applied to a master's program to get a degree in agriculture education. Even though I originally did not go into agriculture in college, I still stayed in the agriculture community through my supervised agriculture experiences. I still stayed in those communities, the places I volunteered for in high school and worked with extensive learning and trying to help me get to where I am now. It's been an amazing opportunity and I'm very happy to be there without the proper, without that community already built ahead of time. I wouldn't have even known that that was an opportunity. A little weird with how I'm about it, but I, I'm happy to be here.
Carol, did you want to share anything?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, this is my sixteenth report since I've been here. And I, I really don't get to gather that many people have even seen an agriculture education program by a long time. And I've been doing this for almost thirty nine years. And Connecticut has the best agricultural programs in the nation. And I'm not just saying that because I'm here trying to fly you. I have national experience. I'm a foreigner to the state. I came from Washington state, I taught out there. And the first time I saw a program here, I thought, crying. I couldn't believe that somebody would actually build a program and the kids could learn like that because I had nothing. And I had one of the better programs in the state of Washington. When we have four teachers, most programs only have one. We don't have a single program that has a foreign teacher. That's important to know. Our students nationally with supervised agriculture, we're number one in the nation. Our kids have more projects going on than they have. They generate about one point five million dollars in absolute income to the state high school. We're not asking high school kids to do that. They just do it naturally and they do it gleefully. Imagine a high school kid going in and saying, oh no, there you have to go put a hundred hours after school in order to stay in the program. It has to be productive learning. Our kids volunteer to do that. We have about ninety seven percent of the students that have at least one SAE. The national average is about fifty four percent of the students in that. So we, we knock it out of the ballpark. And I'm so excited to have gotten to be here and seeing this. It's just something neat. And then this class of twenty nineteen, at least we forget, they started college as a freshman and next thing you know, the whole room and. And, and so I really expect that these kids are going to struggle. I mean, I can't imagine a freshman in now, suddenly, I'm at college now, I'm sent home and I have to do everything online? And nothing was set up and professors don't know how to teach and all that. But if you notice, ninety five percent of them got a degree five years later, when, if they started. That's amazing. I know our state average is no, I, I, I just was born, you know, you had your five-year plan. These kids knocked out long before you even wrote your five-year plan. And I just can't say enough about the teachers in these programs and what they do. And yes, I'm speaking from the core, having been a former ag teacher. But you know what? I'll stack these kids against anybody across the nation and I'll win. And they do it all the time.
I have to agree with you there. I, my community has an ag school and it is a phenomenal school. I love. I I love going there and love visiting there. I love talking to the kids and everything that they and the students that come out of there that return. It is amazing. So I encourage board members, if you have never visited, I know some of you have. Um, they're just, they're just wonderful programs. Um, and and it's it's Lyman Hall that I, uh, that is in my community that has the Ag program. And it was there when I went to Lyman Hall. It was something that we were always so jealous because they got to come in later to school because they had, you know, farm and chores to do. And we were just very jealous that they got to come in later than all of us. Um, but it's so far beyond, you know, doing chores at the farm and everything that they do for our community itself. It's just, it's really, I agree with you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Macken, I want to thank you for this report. You know how strongly I believe in the data that you're bringing forward and why it shows how important it is that we get agricultural experience and agricultural opportunity. But it is so far beyond just, you know, going out onto the farm. And and Harold has been very gracious because I'm like, Harold, it's time to go out to make some visits. And he'll line up a tour for me. Uh, and all of you are are invited. And Morgan, it's good to see you here. Uh, when I was out in Southern Ten, uh, this spring, I still had this giant geranium, uh, that they they were selling. So if any of you have desire to go to get any any plants, poinsettias are starting to come on sale at most of your centers. So, you know, dial in to where your, where the center is and go get your holiday plants. Um, just a little bit of economic, uh, social thing on. Um, but Harold, I do want to thank you. We we did a southern swing, uh, just a couple of weeks ago and had the chance to go to Bridgeport at Trumbull and Stanford. And just a huge shout out to the breadth of information that these young people are learning. Uh, we walked into Bridgeport and they were working on CAD designs. They were working on on cutting out boats. And there's a young man that was actually building a boat in one of the workshops and and, uh, you know, we asked, what, what are you going to be doing? And kind of, you know, shifted his feet. He said, well, he said, I had an internship at Sikorsky this past summer and they've invited me back for a job. These are the things and and, you know, Mr. Macken spoke to the fact that they may not go into agriculture as a, I am going to be an agricultural employee or employer. Uh, but the things that they learn in these programs is just tremendous. And they become the best advocates for the program, uh, you know. And and again, we go into, we go into Trumbull and and they're, they're working with a rare, very, very rare breed of sheep. Uh, and they're doing some really cool things, uh, you know, with Tups Veterinary School on how to, how to make sure that the breed continues to evolve. And then these are things that that most high school students may not be be exposed to in terms of the genetics and and understanding what genetics is all about. Uh, and then we ended up with Stanford and again, you know, a a very urban location, but doing a great job making sure young people have the experience to to understand that agricultural careers just aren't going out and and plowing a field, but but are so, so many more things. So, um, you know, Harold, I thank you for taking me out and always putting up with my, what about, what about, what about? Uh, and again, Irene, thank you for for always, always, uh, you know, helping to make sure this program gets the attention it deserves. And we look forward to seeing where it goes from here. And again, Morgan, thank you for coming and sharing your story.
Well, I I wanted to add my thanks as well. And just listening to you, uh, talk about what's available. I'm like, okay, when are we gonna go and do the social media thing on that so we can get it out? Again, we're talking about wonderful places for students and for education in your state. Uh, we also, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Harold again for all his work. Harold is retiring. Uh, having spent fifteen years here at the Department of Education. Uh, and I know, uh, Irene, I want to say a few more things, uh, directly here about the thing that he's pioneered, serving as the state Career and Technical Education Director, uh, and has done really great work. And so Irene, a few words for Harold?
Sure. So I've worked with Harold, um, while while in district and then certainly here, I'm supervising him. But, um, what I've learned about Harold is he's he's very, um, state and true to the regulations to ensure that the programs are being implemented as intended. And, um, you heard his passion speak about the students and the learning experiences. And that's what you you hear every day when you're working with him. And so I appreciate being able to learn shoulder to shoulder with Harold. Um, I'm a little nervous going forward, but, um, where you met, I I asked him to write a manual for me. I know he's back to, to be a she/her friend. Um, but we will continue to uphold, you know, his legacy and and certainly Commissioner, I want to say thank you for your leadership and as well as Deputy Commissioner Hughes, um, because it is a team effort to ensure these agricultural spaces are incredible. So to underscore what you said, let's get out and visit, play with the rabbits. That's what I just, this time, and I felt really good.
Took pictures of things and I've said, I haven't touched that. Uh, appreciate it. And could you help me just appreciate Harold for his?
Thank you. Um, I grew up from Washington State here in four days and really worried about what I'm going to do. I'm worried about coming from a big state where agriculture is the 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 number two behind Boeing Airlines in terms of what happens in the state. And nobody's in Connecticut on one bulk the size of that state where the agriculture was. And I I tell my, I crank this in family, I have more access to farm products right from the farmer in Connecticut than I ever did in Washington. I mean, my whole town, the west are just closed. The city's in the farmer's market. It's, you know, here in Hartford, there's at least three different farmer markets during the week people go into. And I've been very fortunate. Um, everybody keeps asking me if I'm moving back to Washington. No, because of my home Connecticut person. So, you know, I I'm, I've learned that this is the land of city habits and I've become one of them.
Do you have to have a vote to accept the report on the agricultural science and technology education? Second? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you. Send a motion for item eight A B, the Connecticut Advisory Council for Teaching Professional Standards. Don't pack the plus. Second?
Cool second.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, you're gonna join them. Planning about?
Good morning, Vice Chair Vanham, Commissioners, and members of the board, and congratulations, you're our newest member. Uh, I'm Dr. Jake Govey. I'm not Dr. Shawna Tucker. Shawna's not feeling, uh, too good today. So I'm sitting in as a place for her today on the Bureau of Chief. Um, the Town Office is here this morning to present your reports for your review and hopefully your approval. I'm here with Educational Consultant Sharon Fuller, seeking your approval of the annual report on the work of the Connecticut Advisory Council for Teacher Professional Standards. Sharon is the S D E liaison to the Teacher Professional Standards Council. And she will provide you with an update on the council's membership and highlights on their work.
Thank you, Dr. Govey. Um, you all have the annual report from the Connecticut Advisory Council for Teacher Professional Standards. Uh, this council addresses timely and relevant issues in education, specifically those impacting teachers. They meet four to five times each year with the last meeting in usually in May. Uh, as you heard from our guests earlier this morning, um, they have a joint meeting with the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrative Professional Standards. And for the past several years, um, either Commissioner or Deputy Commissioner Russell Tucker or Deputy Commissioner Sone Mariano have also joined that meeting. And I think both councils find that a very productive meeting because they have an opportunity to hear from Commissioner or Deputy Commissioner and also for them to share what they want to, um, what they would like to share. At each meeting, the, um, council has updates from the State Department of Education. I provide those updates on behalf of my colleagues. And also our two teacher unions, C E A and A F T, provide updates. The council has been working, um, it continues to work, um, for, um, three areas of focus this year, um, professional learning for educators, um, teacher recruitment and retention. So when, um, Ajit shared his presentation, that was very timely. And also revising the Connecticut Code of Responsibility for Educators. That task was, um, appointed by the Connecticut Preparation Certification Board. They asked the council to update that the code of responsibility for teachers. And, uh, just to clarify, there is also a code for professional responsibility for administrators. That one is still in place. Um, and lastly, the council has been working on filling their roster. And I would like to commend, uh, Chair Sandra Mangan for all of her works to fill vacant positions. In your report, you have that four appointments are waiting, waiting for appointment and confirmation. Um, Sandy just sent me, uh, an email last night that said House Speaker Matt Ritter had just appointed Tahira Parvez from Woodbridge. So there are only three remaining, um, appointments, um, on that roster. Questions?
This is, this is, um, this update is for people in the, am I correct, then, last time we saw this?
Yes, thank you.
I remember, I remember we were, there was a concern that there were so many vacancies.
Yes, thank you. They have been, they have been filling vacancy. And I also, um, wanted to let you know that there have been some additional, um, members. So there are just nineteen members, which includes, um, the past couple of years. It includes the current Teacher of the Year and the past year's Teacher of the Year. So those are two, uh, fairly new positions. I was, I lived a couple of years ago.
All in favor of accepting the Connecticut Advisory Council for Teacher Professional Standards?
I, I oppose.
Item eight C, the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrator Professional Standards. Second?
Again, I'm here with, uh, Education Consultant Sharon Fuller, seeking your approval of the annual report on the work of the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrator Professional Standards. Uh, in addition to the Teacher Professional Standards Council, Sharon is the liaison for the Administrator Council as well. And Sharon will provide you with an update on the work of that.
Thank you, Dr. Govey. Uh, you heard this morning from the two co-chairs of that council, um, Brandy Fiori and Patty Phelan. Um, so you've heard a lot of what I would have typically shared with you here. Uh, but I do want to commend both of them for actively seeking, um, members to fill the council vacancies. As Fran mentioned, a couple of years ago, the council was barely in existence. And over these two years, they have worked really hard to fill the the membership role. Um, they currently have four vacancies of seventeen, seventeen members. Um, and I I won't repeat, um, what they shared, but I do, um, want to say that they're actively focusing on, um, the new evaluation and support plan for for leaders. Um, we've heard, um, from many, many folks that sometimes, um, leaders aren't getting the professional learning and and support that that our teachers get. And so they're really working hard to ensure that our leaders participate in the evaluation and support process. Um, and they are, as you've heard from them, they are actively focusing on mentoring, um, for new administrators. I know that they, um, have a new legislative liaison and that is one of her main priorities. One of the council's priorities for her is to, um, advocate for this at the legislature. Um, they've had many discussions on this. There's been, um, I had some, uh, survey results from several years ago that I shared with them. So that is really their main focus and, um, to to also fill those four vacancies. So I want to commend them for the work they have done on the member roster.
I was really excited to hear, um, both women and yourself state that they're looking at like formalized mentoring for new administrators. You had just mentioned about for legislation. So am I to assume from that that the ultimate goal may be to create something parallel to the team process, like what exists for beginning teachers? Is that the type of formalized mentoring or are we talking about a different type of model?
Um, great question. Uh, first, I, they have definitely looked, um, at extensively at the team program and what that exists. I've shared some history in terms of how that team program was developed and what went into it and what the requirements are. Um, I think they're interested in something like the team program, but it would be different for administrators because of the different roles that administrators, um, would serve in. So, uh, do you have any suggestions? I know they'd be welcome to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, I would, um, I'd be really curious to hear, uh, more about that. But specifically, um, just in general, if this is going to go forward to creating something formalized, um, that there be a rigorous criteria for selecting the administrators who are the mentors. Um, that parallels the rigorous process districts use to select the teachers who are the mentors. Um, I think way, way back in the day, I think we all remember of time, people like, well, sure, I'll be a mentor. But then the mentor did not have good training on how to be a mentor. And I just want to make sure that our beginning administrators are formally supported in the same way that I know we do an excellent job of supporting our beginning teachers.
Yes, thank you. And and also, um, I know that it's been mentioned in previously meetings, but, uh, our colleague Ashley Wright is leading the work on reimagining the teams program. So, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll keep the council informed of those updates so that there could maybe be some, some parallel.
I'm excited to hear about that also.
Thank you.
All in favor of accepting the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrator Professional Standards?
I oppose.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Commissioner, you can stay where you are, but I need a motion for, uh, I, item eight D, the adoption of E T S pathway, parapathway assessments for educators.
Move to second.
Okay. Um, I'm here again with, uh, Associate Education Consultant Lauren DeFriede. And she is our liaison to E T S. Uh, she, and we have a recommendation that the State Board adopt the E T S Para Pathways Assessment for Parrot Educators as a successor to the Parrot Pro Assessment and all future updates to the assessments. Lauren will provide highlights of the changes from the Parrot Pro to the Parrot Pathways Assessment.
Good morning. Um, so the Parrot Pathways is the newest app designed to validate and strengthen the critical skills that parrot educators need to support both teachers and students effectively. Um, for over twenty years, the Parrot Pro Assessment was in use. And this past year, Educational Testing Services, um, reimagined that assessment to sort of meet the needs of today's parrot educators. Some of the major changes, and all of this is in your packet, as well as the official technical footprint from Educational Testing Services. Um, the current, the new assessment is divided into two separately timed assessments, one for reading and writing, one for mathematics. The number of test questions decreased, um, in the time of the duration of the assessment, also is slightly shorter. Um, for the mathematics portion, it is online four-function calculator is now allowed, whereas the previous, um, parrot assessment it wasn't. And the reading and writing content, it eliminated outdated pre-reading strategies in favor of science and reading principles, which aligns with all of the work that Connecticut has been doing around literacy. There's an emphasis on reading literacy and analyzing textual evidence. For mathematics, there's an increased focus on real-world applications and problem solving and geometry measurement. And increased, I would say, on data analysis and comprehension in mathematics. The new assessment is aligned to college and career readiness standards for adult education, as well as the International Literacy Association standards for educational support, as well as the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Um, it's important to note that this assessment is only required for those parrot educators who do not hold at least two years of, of college coursework or an associate's degree. Um, the legislation that required, uh, a basic skills assessment, if you will, came out of No Child Left Behind in two thousand and two and then was reaffirmed, um, by the, uh, ASU Act. Um, so Parrot Pro will no longer exist at the end of this, um, academic year. Parrot Pathways will be replacing it, um, by Educational Testing Services. And you'll note that, um, in the technical report, Connecticut participated in the standard setting. And I think that it's important to note that the, um, passing standard is really for that just qualified candidate. So to ensure that folks who are working as parrot educators, supporting of, or. So to ensure that folks who are working as para educators, supporting all our normal learners, you know, have demonstrated basic skills in those areas. Educational Testing Services is also working on the Spanish language version. We don't have a timeline of when they anticipate launching that, but we're excited for that possibility.
Lauren, did I hear you correctly? This is only for para educators who do not have the two-year?
Correct.
Associate.
Correct. If they have associate's degree, two years of college, it's not required.
Okay. Last.
Let's say that the person that will be taking this, take the ETS, will we have like a pre that they could wrap? This is what taking it, like tests do have?
Yes. So Educational Testing Services offers, you know, test prep materials. You know, sort of online practice assessments that they can utilize. Last year, the Talent Office that they could speak to that, the Talent Office had some funding to also provide some test supports and industry of trainings for those folks. I don't know what the plan is for being.
Thank you. And also, thank you for looking into having the testing different language. And would this be a quality of those?
Yes. And the previous assessment had a cost as well. Some districts have figured out ways to be able to fund that assessment, you know, for candidates, but as at the district level.
That's at district level.
That allows for those districts who are piloting this year. Because you have a huge amount of piloting, ETS has provided test vouchers support. This has easily been supported. We also have a community liaison to also support school districts.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add that, as Lauren had mentioned, the new department is a standard setting. We have practitioners from the field who participate in providing ETS feedback specifically in regards to what you're seeing already, that we need for, let's say, a gap in the learning, a certain chara that kind of provides some of that real life feedback. In this new Parapackways, we also can have additional modules to provide additional professional development at these meetings.
Thank you.
They're also providing free resources and the test for free and no cost until December first of this year during the transition.
And our district's aware of that?
Yes, they're getting, yeah, they've reached out to districts and they have two webinars with the states. They are aware of the changes in the test and free resources until December this year.
That would encourage more to.
Try it.
Two thank yous. First, for the very clear in your appendix C about what it means to be a just qualified candidate, particularly in the math section, I think that that information is incredibly helpful to anyone who's going to sit and take this test is very, very clear exactly what skills are needed to make it to that level. So thank you for that. And also, for the members that are not on legislative, I asked a very in-the-weeds question about calculator division, four-function calculators and handheld one for all the things. And thank you, your team got me a reply from ETS in under forty-eight hours. I was very happy to find out that, as you stated, it is an embedded calculator. And the reason why that was so important to me is because right now, all of our high school students that are doing staying used at a calculator, Desmos calculator. And I literally every day struggle with students when I hand them a four-function literal calculator because they are so used to using the online version. So for an equity issue, thank you very much for clarifying that.
You know, we appreciated the question because I'm like, oh, I don't know the answer to that.
You got me an answer in under forty-eight hours, so I applaud you for that. Thank you very much.
Question, maybe for the deputy commissioner. I wonder, like, as we, as we look at our para professionals trying to be what have you, and to becoming certified teachers. Do you think this assessment helps them, like, when they're successful on this assessment? Is there any correlation that it would, like, all right, I can do this and will continue to pursue? I mean, like, as Ms. Record said, there is that fear of taking any assessment that you're not going to pass it.
From my past experience, what I have seen, some of the paras who have struggled are those coming into professional leader. And like who they have not come right out of school. Right? And have just, really what they need is just support and test-taking skills and just reaffirming that they can do this work. But what I feel or what I found with this particular test is that it gives you a baseline that the actual teacher can utilize to help support also the growth of that para in the classroom. Because a lot of them work with the para, with the teacher, it's more of that job embedded, right? Support that's needed and you grow as you're in the profession, but it gives you a good baseline. And I do believe having it in another language will also be useful, just so people feel more dominant in one language over another. And that helps with the confidence, like anything else in the test taking is a skill. And so the more you do it, the better you become at it. Yeah, but I do believe that adding these these types of tests or for us, it's not helpful and also the test prep. I think you have to put in the time, means and job, how to support the role of anyone that you bring in, right?
You know, and I also wanted to add, and I believe in the budget, that there was funding to support paras. And Brian, am I getting that correct? As well, to support para educators and teachers. And so we are working on that. So I just want you to know the commitment to provide this support. And one of the things that that can help pay for is the test as well, so.
And the test prep as well. In addition to, we partnered with CCSU.
So that always surprised me when you, I worked with many paras over my career. And even ones I meet now, like, I could never pass that test. And I'm like, I think you could. Think you could. I think you could pass it very well, but I just, you know, I hope that this is sort of like a step in. Okay, I did this. Now I can keep going. Right. All in favor of the adoption of ETS Para Pathways Assessments for Para Education?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Matters? Yes, it matters. That's nice. Next item is item ten, our consent agenda. Any, all in favor of the reappointment of the impartial application?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
I'll move.
And brings us to item eleven. Motion for Harvard Public Schools with cooperation. So motion.
And this is specifically with the magnet schools. So when you talk about I believe there's a deck.
Good morning, everybody. It's great to be back. It's great to be back before lunch today. But again, thank you very much for your time and thank you for this. This is, this is very wrong for our work in Harvard having funds you would see. And my friend and colleague Matt Van Hors from Legal and Legislative Office. I'm sure Legal and Governors Office is here with me today. You'll be presenting to our executive summary of that report. So I will.
Thank you. Good morning, all. I am pleased to be back here. We were last back here presenting this issue in September. We presented preliminary findings. Now we have more complete findings. I know the requests are ready, probably going to a robust discussion. But I'll proceed with my, with the presentation. And the financial analysis key already explained that the proxy, what I'd like to do is start out with a few foundational principles, a little bit redundant of what we went over in September, but I think review is good. I know there's some good board members, new board members. So that is the plan going forward. So at the outset, I just, I want to make clear that, you know, we're talking about neighborhood schools, magnet schools, allocation of funding. Hartford Public Schools, it's a single unified system that operates both neighborhood schools and magnet schools. The neighborhood schools enroll Hartford resident students, magnet schools enroll Hartford resident students and out-of-district students. And interestingly, something I personally was not, was not aware of is that the Hartford magnet, the actually student population is fifty-two percent Hartford residents. But we really are talking about the education of Hartford students. And also, of course, there's chef compliance issues, which we touched on last time. I think that we'll go briefly through some of the chef background and through the legal background that we covered in September, just for context. So Chef versus O'Neil was a case that was decided in nineteen ninety-six by the Connecticut Supreme Court. Oh, simplifying significantly, I would say that it's a, it was based on the state constitution. And the court essentially ruled that students' constitutional rights were violated based on racial ethic and economic isolate of the black and white school at the time. So over the, over the years, the state created this elaborate network of the voluntary inter-district programs and quickly primarily of the magnet schools, that's by far the biggest type of voluntary inter-district programs, about the open choice and a number of other programs. That's just a little, little background about chef. The Comprehensive School Choice Plan, that's the current stipulated agreement in the case executed in twenty twenty-two by the state plaintiffs and the city of Hartford. And the Comprehensive School Choice Plan, along with the applicable statute there that you can see, requires that the magnet schools be high-quality, themed, integrated education. They have specialized programming. The CCP's really kind of leaned into that, if you will, these schools. Important that they are truly magnetic, attractive, to attract that broad range of students, both in Hartford and in surrounding communities. And that was a very significant part of the CCP that included by the Connecticut General Assembly, and it's in order of the Superior Court. So that's background about chef, the CCP, and where we're coming from with all this. The equity-based budget framework, that's what we're here to talk about, the implementation of that. Hartford implemented this framework is likely to point to me, it's a way of allocating funding. It's a methodology that the district view needs, the Hartford District, to allocate funding to magnet schools and to neighborhood schools. And part of our review is what funding looks like under that methodology. And of course, whether it's be compliant with the legal requirements of chef, that I touched on last time. So that's just a little sort of background. If we can advance to the, to the next slide, and I will begin with the first major finding of the, this analysis that we've done. And apologies, there's also some background here that I like to provide. And then do it next slide. So what this analysis shows, we had this the last time. It's theoretical operating budget, operating budget of ETS locals and magnet operating grant funding. Between the chef operators in Hartford City. And we, the theoretical analysis is what it does is that for the calculation, we are equally taking the ETS funding to the Hartford Public Schools, evenly distributing it throughout the schools in the district. And that's the calculation that we did. We think that the that's for centralized costs. And the reason for that is because we wanted to do an apples-to-apples comparison between Hartford and peer operators, and we did not have the centralized cost information for those peer operators. And therefore, we didn't take that in this calculation. And you can see along the bottom row, based on this calculation that we did, you can see that Hartford lags behind the peer operators. I just want to touch again on a little bit about the different operators. You have Correct and Goodwin, also known as Goodwin University Educational Services. So those are the two entities that you'll see up there. They are non-board of education operators. And the, the funding for those entities from the state is different from the funding mechanism for the Hartford Public Schools. They're non-board of education operators. They're not municipal taxing authorities, so they have no tax base. And those non-board of education operators in the chef region are funded through magnet school operating grants for all students, for in-district and out-of-district students, plus tuition. They're authorized under the law to charge tuition. Hartford Public Schools, by contrast, is as a chef region board of education operator, is funded through ETS local funding, and that magnet per pupil operating grant, we touched on that last time, it's only for the out-of-district students. So that's a very significant piece of how this calculation is done. So this is, the bottom line, you can, you can see it there. Again, Hartford lags behind. We talked last time a little bit about the two thousand nine legislation and what that means in terms of the legislative intent. And the General Assembly threw that legislation and enacting the magnet school funding framework. It was in place during the period of analysis. They went and they differentiated all chef operators as a group and gave them elevated levels of funding. And you can believe that that speaks to legislative intent, that equal funding parity in funding between chef operators is required under the law. As we talked about in September, it would be illogical to have it any other way, to have different chef operators funded. Although they're funded in different ways, they have different funding outlets. And so that was our legal conclusion with that.
Yes, I just declared a finding question. Sir, are these, are these numbers adjusted for inflation? Or are these just the actual dollar values that were spent, say, in twenty-nine, or not that were spent, but they're computed using this method in twenty nineteen and twenty-four?
I believe there is no inflation adjustment.
Yeah, just, just for what it's, for context, maybe the board inflation of this period was just under twenty-five percent. So if these numbers are not going up by at least twenty-five percent from twenty nineteen across this period, they're actually going down for what it's worth, like, to make sure we have that.
As a group, you're saying, so not relative to?
I mean, they're all going down essentially in real terms. I just want to make sure we have.
So they're not nominal figures. Okay. Well, thank you for pointing that. We move on to the next slide. Let's Okay, so these, the figures in this table, by contrast, so these are actual, these are based on actual accounting. And it does reflect the deductions for centralized costs. And so these numbers will differ from those presented in the last slide. And I just want to draw your attention to a few, a few different parts of this table here. One is budgeted operating funds for pupil. And that is in the second to bottom row. And that's ETS local and magnet grant funding. And so if you compare magnet schools to neighborhood schools in twenty nineteen, right? So you look at that row, you see the ninety-six, ninety-seven versus the ten, three, forty-one. I'm going to try to minimize the extent to which I'm reading on the top of the page. But I just wanted to point to that. So that's a difference of at least under forty-four dollars. And these are per pupil numbers, right? So magnet schools have, are funded six hundred forty-four dollars more per pupil in twenty nineteen neighborhood. By twenty twenty-four, that difference goes up to three thousand three hundred seventeen, right? And so that would be a neighborhood, neighborhood school advantage, if you will, of three, three thousand three hundred seventeen dollars per pupil, per pupil basis. And you can see the trend line, the trends in funding increases, magnets versus neighborhood. So that's the first one. The second, and again, just making a few points here, there are lots of different entrances and things to be gleaned from the table. But the second major point is ETS and local per pupil. And that is sort of in the middle row there. and local per pupil. And that is sort of in the middle row there. And if you look at budgeted funds for twenty twenty-four, for example, you have, you could see that it's nine thousand and change in twenty twenty-four versus fourteen thousand one eighty-six for neighborhood schools, which is a, that's over a five thousand dollar gap per pupil, per pupil. And when we're doing this analysis, we're talking about in-district students only. So just a, just to give you an idea of the funding differential under per pupil basis along that metric. Discretionary funding, this isn't represented in the table, but you can see my, my bullet there. And speak to enrollment. You can see what it is. Obviously, in twenty twenty-four, enrollment at the magnet schools and input was almost identical. But discretionary funding, thirty-six percent of it went to magnets, which is down towards the neighborhood schools. And finally, I will just touch on enrollment. You can see that large disparity in twenty nineteen, almost two thousand student difference between neighborhood schools and magnet schools, and you have virtually identical enrollment. So just a little bit on our findings. If you would, next slide, please. So this is just wrapping up the, the trends comparison. Budgeted operating per pupil, this is across all revenue sources, and I will draw your attention to the second to the bottom row, which is, you can see that the, the comparison, the fourteen, three oh eight for magnet schools versus over twenty thousand dollars for neighborhoods. Again, on a per pupil basis, so enrollment is not a factor. You're adjusting for that, so it's more than, more than five thousand dollar differential when you have identical enrollment twenty twenty-four. So let's, let's move to the next slide. So I, I will, in fact, the first few slides are relatively dense, and I think it's going to be a little bit faster moving forward. So legal conclusions, I already touched on this all today in September. And the law requires funding parity between the Chef magnet and the theoretical comparison table that there's a significant, you know, disparity in funding between Hartford and its peer magnet operators. And so that is contrary to what's, and it's under the law. But I would say that this is, the reason for this, you know, it, it's, this is the requirements executed most recently in twenty twenty-two. It's also really about providing an excellent education for all students, having a single Hartford district with great options for all. And if you'd said in a different context earlier, everybody to have great options, right, to, to meet the hearts of the family, to be able to choose from great educational options. And that's really, that's what this is all about. So our funding, short call. Now, the equity-based, this is sort of a new conclusion, this third bullet and the sub-bullet underneath. And the equity-based budget framework, it's outlined in the executive summary, it's based on a school-based allocation, district-based allocation. The CCP, as I, as I said, it does speak in, in great detail about ensuring that the magnet schools have all these current themes and up-to-date specialized programs, that they're attractive and appealing. And the framework itself, just by its terms, it doesn't have anything that speaks to that. It doesn't, there's no component of this framework that gets into specialized programming. So it's really, in some ways, the equity-based framework is at odds with the district obligations under the law and the CCP. And again, the goal being, we have this voluntary system in Connecticut, unlike in other states, and the schools really have to be attractive and appealing to be able to, to attract students from both Hartford and from, from out of district. So that's a legal conclusion. I'm now going to segue into other areas. And so based on the analysis we did, based on the numbers we looked at, you can see it yourself, based on the, the enrollment drops, for example, neighborhood schools dropped twenty-five percent in terms of enrollment. But the per pupil costs are skyrocketing, right? So total budget for pupil increased at neighborhood schools by sixty-three percent at the same time that they're having a twenty-five percent enrollment drop, right? And so that, that's got to sort of, you know, label the, at that point. And, and we look further into, are there inefficiencies within the system going up, right? What, what's driving that? And that, so that causes us to look at issues relating to enrollment and building capacity issues to determine what was going on then. The other piece of it, and you can see it already, is student need. Are there issues relating to student need trends that are perhaps driving funding to city and funding allocations? And that's something we looked at in detail in the executive summary, and I can speak to that. So that's just some of the reasoning as to why we looked at the other issues that we did. So very briefly, high-needs students, you can see the enrollment numbers we went through, the high-needs student enrollment. What is a high-needs student? Many board members are probably already familiar with this. These are emotionally disadvantaged, or excuse me, economically disadvantaged students, multi-language learners and students with disabilities. So those are the, that's the definition that, that the state uses to identify high-needs students. And what are the trends in high-needs students at neighborhood schools versus magnet schools over the time period of the study? And you can see that in the third row there, the high-needs enrollment, you can see the percentages, very significant difference in, in terms of changes in high-need enrollment on a absolute student basis. If we could look at twenty nineteen, the magnet schools had three thousand six hundred and forty-two more high-needs students, excuse me, the neighborhood schools had three thousand six hundred and forty-two more high-needs students than magnet schools. And that differential went down all the way to one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven. And so the high-needs proportions of students, the concentration of the different schools, sort of leveling out at the two different schools. And we're talking, if we remove the next slide, I believe, the concentration is, and this statistic isn't necessarily in the table, but the percentage of high-needs students at neighborhood schools decreased from ninety-three to ninety-two percent. The percentage increased at magnet schools from sixty-nine to seventy-five percent. But one of the things we noticed is that frankly, there's, there's a little bit of a mismatch between funding and growth in high-needs students, right? Where, so there's not complete alignment between funding growth and the change in percentage of high-needs students and students. And the data indicates operational efficiency. We certainly acknowledge that that need is a, is a factor in determining funding, no question about that, which is based on a, a very basic level. There appears to be something of a, of a mismatch, which suggests other factors, such as, for example, operational efficiency. Moving on to trends in enrollment, I'm not going to dwell on this issue. It's a longstanding issue in Hartford. You can see the trends there, the table I took right from EdSite, twenty-three point four percent drop in the two years indicated, it was an earlier enrollment study in twenty twenty-one, which forecasted an additional decline in enrollment. So clearly, enrollment is declining in the, in magnet schools and neighborhood schools, you saw in the, in the table, however, much more quickly at magnet, please pull the study period. This is a, from a, an earlier study. And interestingly, this study, the district embarked on this study following a fifteen percent enrollment decline for neighborhood schools and steady enrollment at magnet schools. And one significant takeaway from that study is to achieve fiscal sustainability and models for excellence the district should consolidate. It's most under-enrolled and under-utilized schools. And that just, there was lots of discussion, obviously, about how you have schools that are under-utilized and, you know, not, not of full capacity. There are inefficiencies. And I think frankly, that's, that's what we're seeing here. So if you advance to the next slide, we have just a summary of the facility here, so on the, this is Hartford Public Schools, on the neighborhood and magnet line. Then on the left side, you can see that the number of schools in twenty seventeen, eighteen was at forty-five, reduced to thirty-eight in the year nineteen twenty, and then it has inched up in recent years, and then it's transferred in buildings and returned to thirty-three building total, and it's been that way since the year twenty twenty-one. Utilization is, is also, I think, interesting as well. Utilization was being the percentage of school capacity and of enrollment. So you could see that there are six, six schools that are less than thirty percent utilized, an additional seven that are fifty to fifty-nine percent utilized, and then four schools in sixty, sixty-nine percent range. And then account for seventeen schools, which is half schools, that are under, truly sixty-six percent is, is the highest amount in that range. So if that's two-thirds utilization, sixty-six percent utilization, you have half your schools are less. So that just speaks to the current situation with new building utilization. So moving to the next slide. So what does all this lead to? We have these recommendations I really do want to emphasize. You know, it's about ensuring a healthy Hartford, a healthy school ecosystem, both neighborhood and magnet schools. And we have these three recommendations, which we believe can all work together. And number one is for the district to conduct a comprehensive utilization feasibility analysis. We think that, I'm speaking for myself, but really the data to kind of pry out for that when you have building utilization levels where, where they are. And it certainly aligns completely with the two thousand seventeen rule, in terms of maybe are there deficiencies that can be found so that funding can be allocated to instruction and other, other goals that more directly centers students, and that would be part of our recommendation. Second recommendation is to, for the state board ultimately, to establish funding parameters with district neighborhood school and magnet schools, to ensure a healthy Hartford across the board, healthy, well-funded school, whether they're neighborhood or magnet. And the State Department of Education will put those together to align the Chef standards, and it'll be subject to, to annual monitoring, and that's the oversight. And then the third is to assess the impact of the new funding framework. Don't want to dwell on this one either. I talked about it in, in September, immediately, right at the end of our study. So for fiscal year twenty-five, the, the funding structure changed somewhat, although it's a fundamentally the same, but it's now based on a more need-based framework. So with the fiscal year twenty-six data, along with twenty, twenty-five data, we have two years of data to be able to assess the new funding framework and the impact on funding of neighborhood and magnet schools in Hartford.
Thank you so much. Yeah, very, very comprehensive, really appreciate it. And I appreciate the recommendations. I'm curious as to what is the responsibility of the Hartford Superintendent of Schools and Hartford Board of Education with respect to these findings, adherence to the law, et cetera?
Well, the city of Hartford is a party to the stipulated agreement. And one of the things I didn't mention today, but I mentioned it last time, is subject to this ten-year permanent injunction, and which enables plaintiffs to take the state back to court. The state, we, the state are ultimately responsible, right? They, we use these schools, or I shouldn't say we use this bad language, but these schools help the state to carry out their, the state's constitutional obligation, as identified in Chef. So it's really ultimately the state that's responsible, but the, the city as, as a party, the city agreement certainly has, has an obligation to adhere to the law. And I think we want to work hand in hand with the, with the city and with the Hartford Board of Education to set a real place to provide that excellent, excellent education for all and for compliance as well.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So what's the next step with respect to that partnerships? That partner will take you great direction.
Thank you very much. That's a wonderful question. Oh, for starting your attention, I don't know if we were able to see it on the news, the mayor of Hartford, Mayor Ron Blom had a press conference about two weeks ago, where he invited Commissioner Russell Tucker to speak with him podium. And it was a press conference to announce he will be looking forward to put together a five-year plan for Hartford Public Schools. And I believe some of these issues would be addressed as part of that plan. So certainly, there would be a partnership between the department and Hartford Public Schools and the superintendent going forward. In addition, the accountability and support team that I spoke of two hours ago, that's really looking first at the recommendations regarding special education and the financial operations of the school system. The local also be working with HPS on this as well. But all three prongs will be involved under the oversight of the CSD accountability and support. But again, the mayor is also aware of this. He does get our reports. He's got this one now. But he did just recently have a press conference where he addressed the need to go forward with some changes as well.
Second.
I'm looking at the slide titled facilities. When the school totals count, does that represent a literal school, or is a program also considered a school in that case?
I, I, it, it's a school building, right? So there, the reason, I mean, we're
Well, no, because there's a school title column and a building column. So I'm trying to understand what is the definition of school for that particular count?
There are some school, there are some buildings that house more than one actual school.
Okay.
So it would be school, not program, but school.
So a literal school, not a program, is the forty. And so ostensibly, there are seven schools that are sharing building space. Is that what that is?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. So then in the other column, where we're looking at the less than fifty percent, the six buildings that are at less than fifty percent, do we know what type of schools those are?
Most of those are neighborhood schools.
Grade level, sorry.
Oh, grade level.
It's, yes, it's, it's broken up into patches. So it's appendix D, and it's, it's the lightest shading, though it's the
Can you give me a page number?
We didn't number the appendix, but the
Where are you?
Thirty, yeah, where is this? Well, that's because of appendix D, so we're
Thank you.
Can you read them all?
Oh, I got it. No. This is the largest executive summary I've ever seen.
Yeah.
I don't know about anybody else.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I was just curious in terms of knowing in my own school district, we have programs that utilize a building, but programs, not a school. I'm just trying to understand, to make sure that I have a comprehensive understanding of what this is. So the, when we're talking about the schools that are, say, utilization's thirty-two percent, so it's a pre-K school, a pre-K integrated school, and what, so they're mostly pre-Ks?
In that category.
In that category. Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. Dr. Zimber.
Thank you for the report. I, I, I found this to be very informative. I, I especially appreciate your, perhaps you were going to do this already, but what certainly looks like responsiveness to my question about student need. I found that's changed over time. And to what extent that can sort of help us understand the spending trends we're seeing. I do have two questions. If you could go back If you could go back to the, the last slide so we can see the agenda you set.
This one?
No, no, like the end.
Right, right.
Yeah. Right, so I, I guess my, my first question, I think, relates partially to the second bullet point, but I think also actually to perhaps the legal point as well earlier. Uh, so, so we've shown, like, what I, we've seen, you know, in general decline in overall funding, but a relative increase in the funding for neighborhood schools compared to, uh, magnet schools operated by HPS. That's sort of the point you're making in the end though. The argument is, okay, we think the magnet level probably should be higher if, if they're going to do these special programs that they're obligated to provide under CHEF. You know, a question that I think, an objection that could have been raised at that point is something like, oh, perhaps differences in need, um, explain, you know, you might be able to offer, if you think that higher need students require more funds to achieve the same level of experience, you might imagine that you would equal funding or even slightly less funding to achieve like a higher level of magnet school than magnet schools where there are relatively few higher need students. If that makes sense, right? The argument you've made here, I think, is closely related to that in the sense that you've shown, okay, changes in, in the share of these students between the magnet schools and the neighborhood schools for the last five years can't really explain these, these funding alone, changes we've seen, right? Exactly alone, right? The question I have is sort of a one that, that I think speaks to point two, which is a responsibility that we'll face as a board seemingly soon, um, which is your kind of, I think the discussion you gave, which I found very informative, does presuppose that we had the right level to begin with in twenty nineteen, essentially for how much more funding schools with a bigger share of higher students should get, right? You know, Hartford in twenty twenty adopted this equity-based formula. It's right there in the name, I think, right? That they were trying to make perhaps the allocation of funding more equitable, right?
Name it, yes.
And I guess the question is like, to provide the, I guess my, my, my question is like, do we think we were getting right before and now we've gone too far in that direction? Or is it perhaps possible that we were hitting that balance wrong before and now we're, now it's right? I guess my question is, what do we think the relationship between need and funding should be essentially, right? This is a question that we may have to answer, I think, to deal with this point too. Um, do we think that Hartford had this approximate report now that aired? Do we think that maybe now they're closer to being right or is it some other thing?
Yeah, you know, that, that's, it's an interesting question. I think we, the, what the law, the legal requirement is funding parity with the other. We didn't have that analysis in twenty nineteen.
But what is funding parity? What's the definition of funding parity?
Well, yeah.
Calling her. We have to, I'm sorry.
It's me looking at her to say. I need to join the table, Rob.
I think funding parity just means roughly equivalent amounts of funding between CHEF operators that are carrying out the same roles, the same.
Regardless of differences in the population.
Uh, yes.
I mean, if that's the case, then I, then I agree with, with everything you're saying. But strikes me that, I guess you can argue, you know, of course, have the obligation to enforce, enforce this, but I guess you can ask.
Um, Rob, I'm not Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Rob, could you move it closer to the microphone?
I'm Robyn Sier, Director of School Choice. Um, the question around the equity-based budget framework is really an interesting one that you raised and we've tried to think about conceptually, whether or not that adjustment was something that did create equity in the system. But we have to look at the system and the system, when you look at the data, doesn't align in terms of what the ultimate goal was around that funding framework when you also consider the fact that there is the CHEF obligation. So we're trying to look at this and why. And that second bullet is really about what step back and figure out for the board and supporting Hartford, what does make sense in a very complicated funding schemes when you have this other obligation as well? And what Matt started with, we are trying to look at the system where I'm a parent, I come in and I get to choose a great choice, whether it's a magnet or a neighborhood school. One shouldn't be better than the other and they all should be funded in a way that is a great education for students. When you look at the data, you step back and say, this is why these three are interrelated. Does number one say to me, wait, I, maybe I have a funding allocation that would go to instructional supports if I was using the dollars in a different way? So that's really the finding. It's not like any conclusion necessarily that the equity-based budget framework in general isn't an, I, good idea relative to core force work. Again, you know, you got to put on the side. It has to build in the fact that you have this responsibility because magnets are supposed to do something different under the law and under the CCP. But even in the context of the core curriculum, something based upon that pace of change doesn't align. So that's really why those recommendations make sense. Look, there's a new funding framework, take a look at it. What does that mean? Number two, let, look at the system and the way they're using dollars relative to a big system that is shrinking in terms of enrollments. And number three, you know, what can we do as a Department of Education to inform the board about how we can better support Hartford in terms of how they're allocating the money?
Thank, thank you, Director Sisner. So I think, I do think that from my perspective, I guess to reframe a little bit, um, to the extent we're, we're dealing with point two. And as you say, stepping back to think about, okay, what should these budgets look like? It might be useful, um, as a point of comparison to ask, what is the relationship between need and spending as well as perhaps between magnet schools and neighborhood schools look like in other districts besides Hartford? So we have a benchmark offering parents across the state, right? That context can certainly be helpful for me in saying, okay, how does this, how does this look? How are we doing, right? So maybe that's something that as we forward to this, we could think of. I, I should pull this just by saying that your broader points, but okay, uh, do we think Hartford Public Schools are operating at reasonable scale given the lighting at home? And that's, I, I thought that was also very, I'm receptive to that, that, or that's important. So I'm not really trying to, about that, but just that we're being asked here to take a stand about the relationship between funding and need at some level. So I just want to make sure we have the appropriate context for that discussion. So thank you so much and I appreciate your, like, I appreciate the report. It's really helpful to see.
Along those lines, I just have some clarification. When the high-needs students, like you find in the neighborhood school, the high-needs students increasing the magnet schools?
Yes.
Are the high-needs students going to the magnet schools or coming from the neighborhood? Or are they coming from elsewhere?
I don't think we, what is this?
Yeah, I don't think we tracked, um, a student to know exactly where the students went, but there is a broader system. So a student leaving could go to a Hartford-operated magnet school, but they could go to a CTEC's program or another, uh, magnet school operated by Pratt or Blue Winnsor. We also have, uh, other local boards of education that operate magnet. So we don't have that longitudinal look on a kid-by-kid basis, but that, we know that does happen.
I'm, I'm thinking of the magnet school more diligent in identifying high needs than the neighborhood schools? Or is it the neighborhood schools is one of the, well, we have four different other towns where they take students and say, well, let's put them in the magnet school. See if they're high needs in that there.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, just in doing the work that we do know from past studies that have been done, there's some self-selection from a parent perspective that choose to maybe make a choice to try another, uh, school environment based upon a particular need. So we do see in, and you saw in the data, the percent of high-needs student population is increasing in magnet schools. And you see that in open choice districts as well, like that seems to be. Now, whether that's an identification question or just a self-selection from a family question, it's hard to say, but we do know that does happen as a matter of family choice.
Okay, the question that I have with utilization studies, I'm going to mention that. When was the last time utilization study or and/or enrollment studies was conducted?
The one that we're aware of is, um, in twenty twenty-one by educational resource, resources strategy. That was seventeen, that was seventeen, the enrollment study was twenty twenty-one. So seventeen was, yeah.
I, I would suggest that's a very long time.
Yes.
The data they have is not, which is still two months. I would say that, um, conducting the utilization enrollment projection study. Absolutely.
I think what I'd like to just jump back is to Miss Ko-Brothers' question, the recommendations. I agree that clearly we need a civilization. And that was just done. Well, when I think about when this whole, you know, when this issue came to account, accountability and support almost two years ago, really. And it surrounded around the magnet schools. And then we had, and I, I don't know the time distance, we haven't come back. I mean, I've been out to you and I've come back in particular to answer questions about magnet schools that we just, we just didn't get. And that's how it landed here at the full board. That, this is probably my most concern is when the question was asked of you is the collaboration. You know, we have a, a different mayor, a different superintendent now. I guess my question, what happens if there isn't that collaboration? That's my worry. This has gone on now for so long that it was discovered that further we go into the weeds, the, where sometimes it looks for us or for Hartford. Where do we move with this, ensuring that there is collaboration system there?
Well, the state board has broad authorities under section ten, two, twenty-three, eight, which runs into, um, there's a whole list of, of powers and authorities that the state board can exercise, including requiring lots of, lots of different things, including allocating funding in certain ways.
Any discussions that I'm assuming, like, that you probably have with Hartford, they're very aware of them?
They are, they are. And, and as I said, you know, this will be part of what the accountability and support team will take on to ensure that there is continued collaboration. And as I said before, part of my reports going forward will report out on progress, on meeting goals, meeting recommendations, um, in the other two reports. And also this as well, and reporting back any problems that come up or involved or there is any sense that there is a lack of cooperation. Uh, we'll be reporting that back as we move forward. I am encouraged by the press conference that the mayor had. I think there is certainly support, um, from the city and Mayor Aron Blum. We need this go forward. Um, and again, we are in very, very close contact, monthly meetings, we have a phone call and that even, and we'll have our finger behind, if there are, if there's any sense that things are stalling or that there's.
I, I should share, let me just maybe double click on the press conference, uh, issue. I stood with the mayor. Uh, the mayor was unveiling the plan going forward. And the reason I was invited there was to talk about the work of the state board and the work that's been happening. I talked about the three-part approach, talked about the reports. The mayor mentioned the, the reports that were issued, the public works report, special education report. And I actually provided some more details about the, and my conclusion, you know, the press conference was whatever the plans of the mayor and the board and all those kinds of things, our commitment and our, our involvement will not wane because it really is integrated in the work that we do. This report that you have today is, remember, is thirty-four on the three-part approach that we've been, uh, going through. So the mayor came out, uh, in, in front of that and then this report is here. Uh, we said, uh, if you were to read the report, that we will be a partner in number one. That is certainly occurring. And then we will engage certainly in number two and in number three. So at least not separate from the work that is actually occurring now. And please to have that conversation, uh, with the mayor and the mayor, and talk to the superintendent. I have a meeting that's going to be coming up with the, with the board. So those are conversations that are in, right? I said at the press conference, I say, it's not going to be easy. No one's suggesting that these are easy fixes. These are challenges. But as I say then and I say today, our students in Hartford and the families that are accessing these choice options, rare choice options, need to know that whatever door they go through, behind those doors will be quality educated for all of them regardless of the option that they choose. And the adults with the accountability and responsibility should find ways to find common ground to work together to make sure that we can achieve those goals.
I did feel that the press conference was bringing that together and it was, it was good to see that.
So one last thing, you mentioned before how to address that the equity-based budget funding is being at odds with the district's obligations. So is that intended to be included in one of these three recommendations? Or is that something separate that will be looked at?
I think the funding parameters would certainly address that. So the.
Sorry, I have one final question, or at least for me. I can't see a question. You know, there are other potential restrictions in play here that the district may face. You know, CHEF is obviously a big issue, but there are restrictions tied to other sources of funding the district may have about how they may be used. And I guess I'm curious to what extent that might, those restrictions on, obviously, grant funds or other sources of funds related to the students might be playing into that. We don't necessarily need to answer that now, but just thinking about what is the, the other restrictions? The difference is as they try to sort of hit obligations is something that slowly, sort of, a better, more.
I think that was part of the piece, but I, because I remember one of your reports that there was really no individual overseeing those kind of other funding sources. And they, I started to correct that.
Yes, yes. And then that was part of the public works, right? And, and they are correcting that. Say the CFO is now about here in. Eight months or so, seems to be going well. There is a little bit more stability, I believe, within the finance office. They are, they've been in procedures, they're putting together a lot of the infrastructure that we hope to see.
Splendid. Well, thank you again for always for these updates there. So I'm for it, well, stay there. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Rob, thank you for the rest, as you often do. Emotion.
As I said, it's been a lot of work.
Imagine.
So I just really wanted to thank the team. We get nothing else stopped while this got added to it. So it's added, uh, you know, responsibilities and work that they've done. And so I just want to thank them for your, your internet committee.
And often, and I'm sure other words, yeah, too. I'll often hear, you know, wow, we're doing a bridge for Hartford. All the districts are never seeing that. And I think, I think that will, I think that also is somewhat helpful that they know that this is what the agency does and they are invested in it. Because we want to ask for both of these, these districts, so. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Someone second. Legislative meeting in room E at one o'clock. And lunch is in J K.